Board members, you know that there are no board member reports tonight. And Omar, you're going to be doing the awards tonight, right?
All right, everyone, 6:01, I'm going to start the broadcast. And then Lori, you can open the meeting. All right, everyone, we are live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Rosa City Schools Board Meeting. I think our third via Zoom. And we thank everybody who is helping to make this happen. And we thank everyone who is attending and watching and paying attention to what's going on in public education in Santa Rosa City Schools. And to open it, we will stand and we will pledge allegiance to the flag together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was looking in the direction of the Montgomery High School flag, which I pledged allegiance to every single day for 14 years. So we do have a report of action taken in closed session. And that is, during closed session, the board acted to authorize the superintendent to notify an administrator pursuant to Ed Code Section 44951 that they will be reassigned for the 2020-2021 school year. And I think that's all we have to say about that. Board members, do we have any statements of abstention? Do not see any? Board members, do we have any adjustments to the agenda or superintendent? See none? And now we get to Zoom again, a very special presentation for the Student of the Month and for our Certificated and Classified Employees of the Month. We are presenting to Biella Elementary School, to Proctor Terrace Elementary School, and to Hilliard Comstock Middle School. And Director Omar Medina will be presenting these awards tonight.
Thank you, President Fong. So our first student today is Ismari Flores, Albert Biella Elementary School. At 11 years old, Ismari Flores already possesses all the qualities that most people wish they had. She's incredibly hardworking, kind to everyone, a lover of books, and she is someone who tries their best every single day. Ismari always comes to school with a smile on her face and does what is asked of her without ever complaining. Ismari thinks before she speaks and would never intentionally hurt anyone. Ismari is a well-rounded student and a role model in her teacher's classroom. She's in a five-six combo this year, and she is an ideal student for it. This is because she is the perfect young lady for the fifth graders to look up to. She is the perfect student for anyone to look up to. Her love of reading has made her an awesome writer, and it also scored her a spot in the county spelling bee. It was one of the many things that was canceled this year, and it would have been a joy to see her compete. Ismari also made the girls' basketball team. Although we were unable to have a girl's season this year, she still remains positive. Ismari shows up to every Zoom meeting and continues to complete all her work. Ismari knows what it takes to be successful, and she always puts in the work. Ismari is such a delight to all of the Biella staff, and we know that she will have an extremely bright future. Congratulations. Now we move on to Jayden Tutten of Proctor Terrace Elementary School. Jayden is a sixth-grade student at Proctor Terrace Elementary. Something that stands out about Jayden is his enthusiasm and positive attitude for life. His teacher, Mrs. Lyon, writes, "From the first greeting on the ramp outside the classroom to the last exchange after a full day of activity, the thing I see when I think of Jayden is his wonderful smile and positive attitude." This part of Jayden's character colors all that he touches. He applies himself to being the best student he can be in his academic studies, as well as in his interactions with his peers and teachers. Is there a subject Jayden doesn't enjoy in school? I don't know. He approaches each with an engaging mind and a willingness to learn. Are there peers that Jayden struggles to get along with? Again, it's hard to say. He has the wisdom of one much older than his age when it comes to knowing how to speak up and how to speak out and when to say nothing at all. This is what makes him a natural leader who is trusted and appreciated by his friends, classmates, and teachers. Thank you, Jayden, for serving as a wonderful example of a graduate of Proctor Terrace, one who is ready to move on to the next level of learning in school and in life. We appreciate and honor Jayden, his family, his current and previous teachers with this award. Jayden, you will be missing. You will be missed on the Proctor Terrace campus, but your Proctor community wishes you all the best for the future. They are certain you will have many successes going forward. Congratulations, Jayden. And now for Moni Rathmeyang of Hilliard Comstock Middle School. Moni Rathmeyang demonstrates the determination, the maturity, the ability, and the leadership qualities it takes to be a successful student in the 21st century. She takes the responsibilities that are delegated to her very seriously. She's a member of our leadership class, helping to create school spirit. At the same time, she takes advanced English classes, math, and social studies, and has maintained a 4.0 for the past three semesters in middle school. Her PE teacher and coach, Ms. Robin Clark State, Moni has run marathon club, played basketball, volleyball, and competed in track and field. She is kind, shy, friendly, respectful, determined, driven, and appreciative of everything. She is quiet, but she is a great leader by her example. Academically, Moni has the goal of going to college and becoming a physician. She has set her eye on attending an excellent college and is determined to work hard and excel in her studies. Above all, Moni is a wonderful and compassionate human being. She shows care and support for other students so many times. She is empathetic and very, very kind. She is thoughtful and generous with her actions and her words. She is a perfect example of a high-performing student that passes through Comstock's doors. She will be leaving Comstock after this year, but will always be remembered as one of our finest examples of the type of student we all want to be. Congratulations, Moni Rathmeyang. And now to the Certificated Employee of the Month, Christine Woodell of Albert Biella Elementary School. Christine Woodell is currently a fifth-grade teacher at Biella, but has also taught second grade. Christine is an amazing teacher who creates a safe learning environment for all of her students that is engaging, inspiring, challenging, and filled with love. Her students are eager and excited to learn with her. Christine strives to ensure that she is meeting students' academic and social-emotional needs at all times, understanding the importance of supporting students to feel safe in taking risks, in asking tough questions, and taking on challenging tasks. Her students say that she always makes them think, and that is a good thing. Students know they will do these things, some of which push them beyond what they thought they were capable of. With Ms. Woodell right there beside them, supporting them, and being their biggest cheerleader, this is because Christine carefully crafts her lessons to meet all of her students' needs. There's no doubt that Christine truly cares for her students, spending her afternoons tutoring those who need extra support and always seeking out new strategies and resources to meet their needs. This love for her students goes beyond the classroom, as she is also very involved in all school activities, loving her Biella community. You can find her at our music concerts, as well as cheering our students in a basketball game. Christine is kind, caring, intelligent, and has a big heart. It is an honor to work beside Christine as she motivates her students and colleagues. We feel lucky to work beside her on a daily basis. Congratulations, Christine Woodell. And now for the Albert Biella Classified Employee of the Month, Peggy Harden. Peggy Harden has been the office manager at Biella's Elementary School for over 20 years. Peggy has had to train three principals and has done it with grace. She is so humble and kind to everyone she encounters. She always greets everyone with a smile and caring personality. Peggy is very knowledgeable. She is a person that other people turn to when they need an answer, and if she doesn't have it, she will find it. Karen Gilery says, "She is the best coworker that I've ever had. She makes coming to work easy, and I truly love her and am blessed to call her my friend." Peggy has a witty sense of humor and makes our office a very special place to be. We can't thank her enough for everything she does for our students and staff. Words that describe Peggy are beautiful, honest, sincere, knowledgeable, funny, patient, happy, loving, protective, and devoted. We have been blessed to have her working at Biella for so long and dread the day that she retires. She truly is amazing, and we can't thank her enough for her incredible work ethic and devotion to our school. Congratulations, Peggy. And now the Certificated Employee of the Month for Proctor Terrace Elementary, Susan Feige. Susan has a total of 28 years in Santa Rosa City Schools with her first teaching assignment at Monroe Elementary. While at Monroe, she taught with her husband, Don, both sharing two classes of fourth through sixth graders. Susan moved on to Proctor Terrace Elementary and currently teaches fifth grade with her partner, teacher Tina Hyatt. Susan is an extremely dedicated teacher who, along with Tina, produces a Proctor Terrace musical every spring. The production for Spring of 2020 was Shrek Jr., which included over 30 members in grades third through sixth and included auditions, after-school, and weekend rehearsals, set building, lighting production, sound design, costume design, choreography, and singing. Susan participated in Santa Rosa City Schools' project lead to guide teachers in the transition to Common Core and was a key member of the Santa Rosa City Schools' cross-curricular design unit team. She is a pioneer and an example at Proctor Terrace for implementing social-emotional supports for students, such as the classroom meetings model. Many students return to the Proctor Terrace campus to visit Susan and remember her as a caring teacher with high expectations and challenge them to become better students and achieve academic and personal success. Susan is a product of Santa Rosa City Schools and a native of Santa Rosa. She loves musical theater, of course, visual art, gardening, and reading. We congratulate and honor Susan with this award. Congratulations. And now for the Proctor Terrace Elementary Classified Employee of the Month, Edward Homalian. Proctor Terrace nominates custodian Edward Homalian as the Classified Employee of the Month. Edward has been a valued member of our community at Proctor Terrace Elementary for three years. Edward consistently goes above and beyond in his efforts to make Proctor Terrace a wonderful environment in which to learn and to work. He volunteers to cover family and PTA events on the weekends and finds creative solutions for issues that arise on campus. He always has a positive attitude, an easygoing manner, time to chat with teachers, families, and students, and a smile for everyone. Edward recently built two custom-made items for the Proctor Terrace campus at home in his spare time. One of those items was a clothes-hanging rack system fabricated from elegant copper piping that allows our staff and volunteers to neatly organize our lost-and-found clothing in an efficient and beautiful way. Edward is a graduate of Montebello High School in Los Angeles, California, and studied electrical computer technology at Santa Rosa Junior College. He is an athlete who enjoys trail running in the regional park foothills of Santa Rosa and is an aficionado of motorcycles and vintage cars. We congratulate and appreciate Edward with this honor. Congratulations, Edward. And now for the Comstock Middle School Certificated Employee of the Month, Robin Clark. As a teacher of physical education, our department chair, athletic director, and a coach of multiple sports, Robin Clark models this school in her own life and promotes it to our Comstock students. Teaching students about the lifelong physical and psychological benefits of exercise is a priority. Robin developed the Scholar-Athlete Program, which provides well-deserved recognition for student excellence in both academics and sports. She has developed programs that exert a positive impact on students' health. In this time of growing concern about the negative effects of poor nutrition and lack of exercise on our nation's youth, many students at Comstock now choose to eat fruit and salads at lunch. Robin's commitment to students extends well past the traditional school day. She coaches a different sport every season. The quality of Robin's coaching has resulted in an impressive list of championships that have far exceeded what one would expect from our small school. Although our school community has been very proud of Robin's success as the coach and educator and the related accomplishments of our teams, we are even more pleased with the enthusiasm that our students have shown through very high rates of participation. Much of this is directly attributable to Robin's dedication and caring, which students intuitively recognize and to which they respond in kind. She is very deserving of this award. Congratulations, Robin. And now for the Comstock Classified Employee of the Month, Maria Lopez Soto. Maria Lopez Soto has been an amazing and dedicated Santa Rosa City Schools employee for the past 16 years. She started out as an English learner technician working with the district office in test administration. She then became one of the first family engagement facilitators serving to Comstock and Pioneer families. As our family engagement facilitator, she helped us establish close ties with our community, as it seems that almost everyone is her cousin. I can relate. She helped articulate to me the school principle, the cultural needs of our community, which led us to establish a strong parent-support community, attendance at ELEC averaging 50 parents a month, and an incredible end-of-the-year promotion ceremony attended by over 1,000 of our eighth-grade students' family members and friends. Further, she has been passionate in imparting information to our families on A- through G requirements, reclassification for English learner students, and how to support students with homework, attendance, and any other school-related items considered vital for our community to understand. Maria moved on to the attendance tech position and fortunately stayed with us at Comstock. She has trained our new family engagement facilitators to carry on this work and continues to help our families fundraise for events for their students. Maria has truly been a partner with us in building our school, and we are so very grateful to her for her dedication, passion, and creative ideas. We are so pleased to honor Maria Lopez Soto. Congratulations. That is all.
Congratulations, everyone. We're very proud of all of you. Hope you took a lot of screenshots of your face there and all the reading, and it's been recorded, so you can see it again. Moderator, it's time for public comment on non-agenda items. And to our public, this is the first time we're doing live commenting. And it's the same thing, it's three minutes, and you get to say it now versus us reading it for you. So thank you for being here to do that. It's a lot of timing and it takes some gumption to get up in front of the board and in public to do those things. So we really want to thank you for making the effort to come and speak with us. And also, everybody knows this is also being simultaneously interpreted into Spanish. And so, again, we're going to be changing interpreters about every 30 minutes. So we'll take a pause for that as well. And board members, as we're speaking, probably not rapid-fire would be a good thing. So moderator, Dr. Kitamura.
President Fong, too, I just want to make mention of the fact that the board and myself and staff are being responsive to the requests and the comments we had about being able to make public comment in a much easier way, and live and in Spanish. And so we just wanted the public to know that we are listening. We hear you. And bear with us as we try this. It's a new process, and so we just thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Superintendent.
President Fong, I'm going to ask the attendees of the meeting now if they would like to comment on non-agenda items. Please click Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen. We will let you know when it's your turn to speak. And please keep your comments to under three minutes. And I see that Paul Kent has his hand raised. Paul, you will be the next to comment. I'm opening your microphone. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted, and please state your name for the record before you make your comment.
Right, my name's Paul Kent. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, I just don't see myself this time. I just thought I'd make a brief comment on the purpose of being hired here in Santa Rosa, Elsie Allen High School, to teach math this past year. It's been an interesting event. Approximately 48 out of 106 students were 10th grade or above, taking Math 1, which means about half were already repeating the class. The 30% were EL, and on top of that, 30% sped or Title I. I had actually just been interested in coming back to Santa Rosa. I went to high school in San Rafael myself. So at the time, last year during the summer, I was up in Montana, had a Skype interview with the assistant principal and the math chair. Moved to Santa Rosa in October, basically, started the year off, and had gotten some good reviews. As it turns out, the district decided not to reelect me for the coming year, although I had moved here, actually in December, everything up from North Hollywood, including bringing up a car, grand piano, and various things. So I just wanted to share with you that because I'm actually open to prospect of staying in the area. I do have credentials in math, chemistry, and a multiple-subject credential. It seemed that the district was short, a couple of math teachers, beginning of the school year. So just wanted to take the opportunity again, thank the district for bringing me on board. And in the event something does develop, let me know. I'm going to have to create a job search on EdJoin at this point. But I do live close by, so thanks again. I can see you, but you can't see me, I guess, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
You bet.
The next person with their hand raised is Maria Arango. Maria, you will be the next to comment. I'm opening your microphone. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted, and please state your name for the record before you make your comment.
Ya està activo? Okay. Buenas noches. Solamente quería preguntar si todavía tengo oportunidad de hacer un comentario público cuando corresponda sobre el documento de la carta de Santa Rosa French-American Charter School. No tuve la oportunidad de enviar el email para hacer el comentario público antes. Quiero saber esa pregunta.
She's specifically interested in making a comment on one of the agenda items, Santa Rosa French-American, I think it was the Santa Rosa, one of the charter schools.
We have Marcela here to interpret our Spanish-speaking comments.
Thank you, Director Medina, though, for stepping in. Marcela, can you hear us, or Dan, whoever?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. Director Medina went ahead and translated. But if Ms. Arango could please wait until that item comes up, the French charter, that would be great. And then we'll raise your hand at that time, and then we'll call on you.
Lo que la doctora Kitamura está diciendo es que cuando llegue la hora... Pero quería saber si como no envié el email, quiero saber si tengo la oportunidad de hacer el comentario cuando corresponda.
Si, no hay ningún problema. What she's saying is she wants to make sure that she can speak when the time arrives because she did not send the email.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, absolutely.
So don't leave. Hang in there, and we'll get to...
No se vaya, por favor. Okay, está bien, gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Arango.
Oh, my gosh, I love this.
The next person who would like to speak is Marcelo Batista. Marcelo, you'll be the next to comment. I'm going to open your microphone. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted, and please state your name for the record before you make your comment. Marcelo Batista, are you there?
It's unmute. My name is Marcelo Batista. I don't have a comment. I'm just listening into the meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll lower your hand.
Hello, Mr. Batista.
Thanks for checking.
So this is the last call for public comments on non-agenda items. If there's anyone else who would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand now. Click the Raise Hand, and we'll see that you want to comment. President Fong, there are no meeting attendees with their hands raised at this time.
I thought that was awesome. Technology, the only thing I'd like would be to see the moderators. Because it'd be nice to see the moderators. It was nice to see the interpreter. But thank you for all the work to make that technologically happen. Great appreciation. We are on to reports. And is there a CSA report tonight?
Yes, President Fong, there is. And I will start with CSA. And I'm going to find Ms. Garcia. There she is. And I'm going to move Ms. Garcia to the meeting. There she is. Hello.
Garcia.
How are you guys doing today?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamura. I don't see that we have the school board, the student member here as well, but the rest of the school board members. First, we would like to welcome the one classified employee who may find Santa Rosa City Schools a wonderful place to work for many years. We congratulate the two employees who will be retiring at the end of the year and thank them for many years of their service. We say farewell to one employee and wish them the best in their future employment opportunities. And last, CSA would like to thank the board and the cabinet for navigating these uncharted times with us. We hope to continue working collaboratively with the district, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, President Garcia.
Thank you, President Fong.
Thank you.
We have a SRTA report?
We do, and I am going to add...
Yeah, I'm working.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to add Mr. Lyon to our meeting. Hi, Will, you're here. Can you unmute?
I made a really funny opening remark right before I unmuted, but I refuse to repeat it. It'll go into the others. Hey, everybody. Glad to see you all here. Glad to see you all here. I love how responsive we are and how reflexive we are. And if we have a problem, then we solve it, come back in. I think we're really doing a good job with that. And us adjusting to these meetings by having speakers come in and say in their own words is an example of that. I think that's a good move. Good evening, Dr. Kitamura, President Fong and members of the board, members of the community. My name is Will Lyon, the president of Santa Rosa Teachers Association, representing over nine hundred educators who are all doing their very, very best to help our students in these challenging times. I mentioned that the challenging part of it because when you work with the adults a lot, it's really easy to think it's going really, really well. The adults have stepped up on all sides. I mean, on the admin side, on the teacher's side, on the parent's side, everybody's doing as well as they can. The students are also doing as well as they possibly can and they're struggling because this is hard work. So I know one of the things we're wrestling with this week and this month and likely in the months to come is whether or not we're going to reopen schools. How can we, you know, what does distance learning look like if we don't? If it is time to reopen up, how will we know and what will we do to make it safe for everybody? Students and staff and the community? And what are plans are we going to put in place if we need to go on another quarantine or otherwise need to go back into distance learning? And maybe with an enormous haircut from the budget because of the looming budget crisis that we're going to learn more about, I think tomorrow. I just wanted to pause on that for a second and recognize this heavy, right? That's a lot of heavy stuff there. Hey, everybody, I just realized it was a moment. Look at my eyes and let you know. I swing on all of us heavily. And every single adult that I'm working with is doing every single thing they can to do for the most amount of good, for the most amount of people, prioritizing students, but also an awful lot of work with parents and other community members. And we're all, you know, in this together and working really hard. I'm really grateful for that, the hard work part. Not so grateful for the to-do list, but so it goes. This is the way. A few weeks ago, we got a heads up from Dr. Kitamura and the cabinet about some of these changes. I think, you know, I'm really grateful that whatever signals they got from wherever they're getting their information, they shared it with us with an invitation to be ready to sit down together and be able to partners and work on the tough decisions they have to make. I am grateful for that and I wanted to report back to you that SRTA is implementing, it's a form of community bargaining. I use that as a model, not as, not, I don't know where it's going to go. But the model that we're looking at is bringing in as many of our members that we can to collect those concerns, prioritize those, make recommendations for the bargaining teams and for the administrators and for the people they're going to sit down and pencil out what it exactly looks like. So that when it's time for us to have a seat at the table, we're ready. This week, we had what we're calling forums. These are internal forums for us. We had four of them, elementary, middle school, high school and special education. We had about one hundred and twenty-five members show up to those four different Zoom meetings. So if you're, if you're showing up to optional Zoom meetings from three thirty to five o'clock, there's a dedication there and we're really grateful that so many of them did. And we're going through collecting that information and going to have it packaged so that the next step, now I want to clarify, those are question sessions. They were not question and answer sessions. Nobody has any answers yet and nobody can make the answers up. We got to go slow on that and the virus is in control of that. Like we're reacting on all of that stuff. So we were real clear with them, we're collecting concerns. Our next step is to take that big list of those concerns, divide them up, organize them and prioritize them. And then come up with recommendations about here are the most important things we need. If we don't come back in, here's what distance learning should look like so that we can come in and do that. I'm really proud of that work. Our members are so thoughtful. Now, however much you've been thinking about it, multiply that times nine hundred of us. Every single member that we have has concerns about it. We also, I'll mention, we put out one of our typical surveys. We got four questions, we got over eight hundred responses. So we had like over two hundred people come in and make really thoughtful questions. I'm, I'm almost certain that if we sat down and looked at those lists of comments and concerns in the raw, you know, without any processing, any one of us, me and any one of you that I'm looking at would sit down and look at that and we'd agree with ninety-five percent of it or more. Their concerns are reasonable and rational and they're not controversial. It's going to be a challenge to prioritize it and it's going to be a challenge to pay for it. And so I just wanted to let you know we're doing that work. Again, expressed that I'm grateful that we had the heads up and the opportunity and the invitation tomorrow. There's an executive committee, one of several that are being developed to handle all these issues. We're going to be able to pull from those focus groups I mentioned to you. We're going to be able to pull members to go and sit on those committees and speak on behalf of SRTA in a way that has evidence that this is where we're at. So I'm glad that we have that. I also want to mention gently, I saw that and I know later we're going to learn more about potential budget issues. We know there are budget issues potential because we don't know how bad yet. We just know it's going to be bad, right? I recognize that. One of the things that was mentioned was furlough days. And I understand why you would mention that and why you'd be thinking about it. I want to just remind everybody that the calendar is a mandatory subject of bargaining. We have currently, we have a calendar that's been negotiated and agreed upon. So if we were going to make some other calendar, that would be, have to be something that needs to be negotiated and agreed upon. And that would include furlough days or any other sort of cost cutting measures that come out of agreements that we've already made. So I think, I don't think we're there yet. I don't think that's, that's something that's going to get decided tonight or maybe even the next few weeks. Sounds like my prediction, without knowing what was learned today from Dr. Mays, is that whatever happens tomorrow, we will have more questions than we did today. And that just seems like how that's going to go. And we're saying, again, we stand ready to work with the district to make good decisions for our students and our staff and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Lyon. Superintendent Kitamura, you have a superintendent report, I believe, tonight?
I do, but I'm actually going to do it within the update tonight in the board agenda. So I'm going to do it there.
Okay, so I have a quick little report, a comment. You know, we are two and a half weeks, two and a half weeks away from the last day of school, May twenty-ninth. And, and these weeks in the past have traditionally been very intense with very much squeezed in all the end of the year activities where people are getting either very sad and frantic or very jubilant and joyful. I am just in despair for all of us. But we're making the road by walking and every single person is walking to bring us forward in this, in this new way, we don't know what we're doing. I know that Diane is waiting for medical information, what to do next. We are all waiting for that and, and she's still waiting. So that, that will come and we're all waiting for that, the entire country. But schools are a lifeline. Schools are the hubs and schools are the centers of support for the economic engine of communities. And there are, there are states in our nation who want to open schools so that people can go to work. But kids are vulnerable too and teachers are vulnerable and custodians are vulnerable. And every single adult that works in school, we're all vulnerable. So we have to be very, very careful. And so we're looking to the future, we're looking to summer, we're looking to opening school, what, what will happen? And no one knows, as, as we all know. But we are certain that it's going to take legislative and congressional action to provide the resources that we need to provide school for students. So every single person on staff is doing their part, like President Lyon says. We are alternately, alternately revved up and we are also discouraged. I'm listening to some of the high school teachers who are just really very sad because they're preparing lessons and not, not very many of their kids may be showing up. I mean, really, lots of kids do their work, but lots of kids are saying, we're in summer, I'm done. It's too hard. And, and sometimes you can't blame them because no one knows anyone's circumstances. And we are rising to meet the challenges. And I, but we can't do this alone. I'm very heartened by the committee, the very large task force, I think, that Superintendent Kitamura put together with, with lots and lots of school people at many, many levels, many departments, many, many just job descriptions where we're, they are going to figure out what's next. Probably take those concerns that President Lyon was talking about and just tackle them in small subcommittees and work it out. Because no one can tell us how to do things because no one's done this before. I'm looking forward to, we all listened to a big, a big meeting this week on what the budget's going to be like, what the budget is like for the state of California and what the budget is like for our school district. And it does not look good. So we will hear that later on the agenda today, so hang out for that. And I don't, I don't know what we're going to do. But anyway, we can't do this individually in silos. So we thank you for everybody putting in their two cents and putting in their best, best efforts. Everybody's idea is, is valid, everybody's idea is worthwhile and we will come up with it together. And we will continue to work for the common good. So I think my two words today are the common good and we all know that schools can pave the way for the common good. So thank you, gratitude, blessings to every single person in our system. All right, we now have a CSBA report, which I don't think we have one unless Director Close has one. But she's on mute. Jenny, unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm having some technical difficulties over here, but I do, I have a short CSBA report and it's not much different from when I had last time. And I did forward the notes and talking points from my latest CSBA Legislative Committee meeting to President Fong and Superintendent Kitamura. But really the upshot is that CSBA Legislative Committee is trying to figure out how to take a real aggressive stance and, and use its lobbying muscle. And it certainly has some to tell the state that, you know, it can't just cut our budget. Like it's cutting everybody else's budget, it's going to have to find a way to give some more money to education because we are part of keeping the economic engine moving. And, and I think we are all, I think we're all fooling ourselves if we think that we would be sending kids back into this environment in this way so quickly if that were not the case. Because it is, it's, it's a human Petri dish. These, it, it, no matter, you know, we can do all the safety things we can do. We can do the best we can possibly do, but we are still sending very young people into very close quarters. And we're going to have to do it somehow with the same amount of staff and significantly less money. And so there, there is an effort to try to, to, to make that point in, in, in a real way at the state level. I don't, I don't know what that means yet, practically speaking. There are certainly talking points and they're scheduling meetings and, and all that. I'm not sure, but I know that, that they're generally legislative committee meetings three or four times a year. And now there's sort of emergency meetings every few weeks to try to rally the troops and figure out what, if anything, can be done to, to get the state to take this seriously. They're asking the schools to do something that is really difficult and even more difficult on less money. And, and I think there's, they seem to do it without being super honest about the challenge they're asking the school systems to undertake. So that, that's my report. Also grim, but.
You know, educators have different organizations to work from. California Teachers Association and the California Association of School Administrators and also the California School Boards Association to all work on the behalf of kids, kids and the employees who work in the schools. So I support that too.
Yeah, if I could say one more thing, Lori, you know, I once, I asked Frank Pugh a long time ago, who definitely has our, our greatest institutional memory in our district and has been involved at the state level with CSBA and then at federal level or national level at NSBA for decades. You know, was there ever a time when the various lobbying groups, CTA and CSBA and AXA worked together on something? And the answer was no, but there are a couple of times when they came close. And then, you know, the devil's in the details and those, those relationships fell apart. But if ever there is a time for these three groups, and particularly CTA and CSBA, which are really powerful lobbying groups and, and I think have some muscle when they say like, nobody can go back to work if we're not doing our jobs. If there was ever a time for these lobbying groups to come together and say, you're going to have to prioritize this bucket of funding or just, or figure out some kind of different way to reimagine this. I would think that this is the time and, and, and we do, and I don't think that we need to stand here as passive victims. It is true, people cannot go back to work unless we are doing our job. And so I think there's some power in that. And if there's some way to get CSBA and CTA to come together on this, then this is the time.
Okay. Superintendent Kitamura.
I sit on the, I'm blessed to sit on the CSBA Superintendency Council as well as AXA. I've been sitting on the AXA Superintendency Council. And the matchmaker is AXA between CTA and CSBA. And the three groups from my meetings have said, in my, not CTA, but CSA, CSB, C-SBA and AXA about exactly what you're saying, Jen, that we have to come together and we have to fight. We have to not wait to let them do it to us, but we have to go after what it is we need. We are struggling right as, as every day we talk about, how are we going to bring kids back on any kind of a hybrid schedule? Because who's going to take care of the kids on the opposite end of that schedule? For people to go back to work, you can't say, oh, well, you can just do a hybrid schedule because it's not going to work. Someone's still got to take care of kids on the opposite end of that schedule. Ed Sheffield and, and Director Tella Cruz are no more, they're, they gotta go back to work, right? So it's, it's imperative that anything we talked about, that President Lyon talked about, that we're going to work on on a committee, we can plan until the cows come home. But if there are not resources behind it, there is no way we're going to be able to, I'm sorry, there, it's just the truth. We're not going to be able to implement, implement those schedules. And so what does that mean for us for the starter school?
Agreed. So I just want the public to know that teachers, school staff, Diane, her team, you're, you're boots on the ground. You are making things happen for kids in schools. And everybody else, the board, we need to be working hard at the, at the policy levels, at the legislative and congressional levels, which includes calling, meetings, letters, whatever we can do. Pressure.
The advocacy for CSBA is May twentieth to twenty-ninth. AXA is going to follow suit in that same timeframe. I'm not sure about CTA, but I tell you, we should come out strong during that advocacy period at the Capitol.
Okay, so just again, CTA is California Teachers, AXA is Association of California School Administrators and CSBA is California School Boards Association, those three. All right, we're moving on and I keep losing my place in the agenda because I have too many screens open. We are now to discussion action items and our first action item is E1, approval of the resolution recognizing May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And I get to present that. And it is a whole month. It is law, it is national law, it's a whole month. And it was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty-three. And also to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May eighteen sixty-nine, and May. The majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And by the way, right now on PBS, Channel Nine, KQED, there is a five-part series on the contributions of Asian Americans to the United States. And I watched the first two and I learned a lot, which means we didn't teach it in school. And I watched the first two, and I learned a lot, which means we didn't teach it in school, which we should be doing, which we will be doing, but it was astounding. The Chinese, by the way, were the first immigrant group that had an entire law passed to exclude them, all of them. And the Japanese, of course, we all remember their place interned camps. And one thing that we saw was that the survivors, uh, and the, um, grandchildren of the people who were interned in Japanese camps went down to a camp that is now housing children, children of migrants, and saying that this should not be happening again, we should not ever be putting children behind barbed wire and fencing again, so. They were talking about paying it forward and, and standing up for, for righteousness, and so that's something that was covered in this, that I didn't know. And so this resolution is that we acknowledge these Americans for their contributions to government, industry and commerce, agriculture, science, literature, and the arts. And so this is an action item, approving the resolution 2019-20-72, recognizing the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. I have a motion for this. Director Medina.
Second.
And that was?
It was alegria.
Director De La Cruz. Are we taking the vote now, Lori?
Yes, I'm calling the vote, sorry. Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Money Ari.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Close.
Aye.
I see you're saying it.
Aye.
And, uh, President Fong.
Aye.
Okay, um, pardon, um, let me turn on my video, sorry. Um, I'd like to, uh, suggest that we do a video switch. I'm sorry, not a video, I'm sorry. It's an interpreter switch, seven o'clock.
All right, so we're gonna take a second for that to happen. I'm ready.
I'm back in the main channel.
Okay, we have, uh, switched interpreters. We're good to go.
All right, yeah, thank you, everybody. We are now on, uh, E2, which is an action item. It's Approval of the Resolution Recognizing Classified School Employees Week, May 17th to, to 23rd.
Thank you, President Fong. Uh, for this resolution, I'm gonna ask Assistant Superintendent Specter to, uh, present it to the board.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Karamura, and good evening, members of the public who are watching with us, and, uh, President Fong and members of the board. I actually wanna read, um, a statement. This is always fun to gather some information, and, uh, Director Cindy Brennan, um, compiled some of this, which I think is really exciting and fascinating. And we have 645 classified employees at Santa Rosa City Schools, and they are working in 14 different major job classifications, such as student support, instructional technology and maintenance, and represent 90 distinct job titles. From food production to school site office and security to daycare, IT, HR, custodial payroll, accounting, delivery, administrative support, classroom assistance, and classified supervisors and managers, our district, as we all know, on a daily basis, would not be able to function without the tireless support of these valued employees. Each one plays a vital role in the safety, education, and success of our students in the best of times, and I would also say, most especially now in difficult times. They rise to the occasion with their professionalism and passion. The average length of service is eight years. Catherine Babini, who is retiring at the end of this year, holds the record, I'm gonna let you guys guess, but I'll let you know, 43.5 years of service in our district. She is currently serving as a Special Education Assistant at Comstock Middle School. Next in line for longevity is Eva Calderon, the ESAM at Brook Hill. She has 39.7 years with our Santa Rosa City Schools family. And in fact, we have 72 employees with 20 or more years of service. And one interesting fact, um, is that we have a large number of families who work here, from spouses to moms and dads and their childrens to brothers and sisters. It really is a family legacy to work with Santa Rosa City Schools, and we even have one family that has six members working here. They don't get any family discount, but they all work here. And so it is truly with the utmost respect for all of our classified employees that we bring this forward, um, to resolution tonight. And with that, I do turn it back to President Fong and the board.
All right, so this is an action item?
Correct.
I can entertain a motion on this?
But I'd like to move to adopt the resolutions celebrating classified employees.
Second.
I'll second.
That was, uh, Director De La Cruz, and seconded by Director Jill McCormick.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Money Ari.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
President Close.
Um, hi, Director Close.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. Thank you.
President Fong, are we gonna be, uh, calling for public comments on, on each item?
We are. Or we will be.
We, yeah, we, we should, yeah, on each, on each of these items.
The first three, but we don't usually have any on those kinds of things. So we're moving on to four school site principal reports, and we will hear the report, and, um, we will, the board will be asking questions to staff about that, and after the board asks questions.
I think we skipped E3, Lori.
Yeah, we have one more.
Oh, right. The money one.
Yes. Yes. So, uh, I'm bringing before the board a resolution really, uh, to call on or call in or call out our congressional, uh, delegation. Uh, we need support at the federal level to get the $175 billion that California needs, um, in order to support everything that has gone on with result of this pandemic. Um, and so basically what it is, is really, uh, giving support to, uh, CSBA, NSBA. Um, you, you see the AXA, uh, the National Teachers Association, I mean, there's a ton of, um, advocacy to, to the legislature about, um, taking seriously the, the need that we're gonna have in the school systems to be able to get the economic structure of this country going again. So we can speak about it in California, but it really is a national crisis, and so, um, I'm proposing that, uh, we, the board, um, contemplate this resolution so that we can send it on, uh, in support of our organizations, our educational organizations, and to call in the legislature in, uh, Congress in, uh, Washington DC. So, President Fong.
Any board members have any questions for staff on this one? And are there any public comments on this one, moderator?
No hands are raised at this time.
So any discussion on this? Director Medina.
I wanted to make a motion. I'd like to move that we adopt resolution 2019 slash 20-71 regarding federal education funding in light of it that's associated with COVID, the COVID-19 event.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, so Dr. Director McCormick beat out Director Sheffield again for a second. Any other discussion?
Like Jeopardy.
All right, Lori, we'll call, I'm calling for the vote.
Aye.
McCormick.
Aye.
Money Ari.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye. All right, we are moving on to school site principal reports, and again, after questions, will be time for public comment if there are any. So, uh, Superintendent. You're on mute.
All right, uh, thank you, President Fong. We have our last, um, three schools of the year to present their reports. Um, and so I will actually turn it over to Assistant Superintendent, where'd she go? She was right there. Oh, there you are, here. Dr. Guzman, to, um, introduce each of the schools.
Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Karamura, and members of the board. Yes, we're going to be hearing from two elementary schools and one of our middle schools this evening, and so we are going to start with Albert Biella, and, uh, Principal Diaz will be presenting first tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to, um, the principal.
Good evening, let me, um, share my screen. So, good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Karamura, and members of the board. My name's Saiva Diaz, and I'm the principal of Albert F. Biella. And here is our beautiful class, well, part of our sixth grade class. Our school is made up of 335 students, um, 44% which are EL students, um, which roughly is about 149. We have 74, um, socio-economically disadvantaged, um, students. And some of these slides, I'm gonna go a little quicker, just because you guys have seen these slides, that we have our Santa Rosa City Schools, El Cap goals, goal one and goal two, to provide a coherent and rigorous and relevant teaching and learning program for all students to graduate college and career-ready. Um, goal two is to increase student and family wellness and engagement. We've had these, um, El Cap goals, um, for a couple of years now. And then the second slide is our theory of action, right, um, to improve quality practices through continuous development of leadership capacity, and looking at student learning and looking at the whole school as a system. And then this year, um, the Santa Rosa City Schools strategic plan, which was adopted, the priorities, and there are seven of them. And then we like to focus on all of them, but in this presentation, we'll definitely be looking at, um, how we are getting, um, our students ready to continue on from elementary. And then the next slide, obviously, is the Santa Rosa City Schools vision and mission statement. So one of the things that we embarked in was looking at the district's, um, vision and mission statement, and coming up with one for Biella that aligned with the district's one. So this is what the staff came up with. For us, as a school, Biella will send students into the world who are empowered to work together, find purpose, think critically, embrace diversity, and celebrate individuality. And our mission is that Biella is dedicated to providing a safe, equitable environment for students, families, and staff. We will develop lifelong learners with a strong sense of self and acceptance of others who are prepared to thrive as a part of a greater community. And I think that encompasses all the seven priorities. Um, our schools' cycles are to increase literacy and reading and math and writing, and of course, to decrease chronic absenteeism and tardiness 5.5% every school year. And then the way we tackled it is looking through our, um, cycle of inquiry, right? So we look at, analyze data, determine what our focus is, then we implement it, do it, and then we analyze the impact and to see if we will have to revisit it, where, um, we need to improve on, and so on. And the lens that we look at is, we, with our continuous work with Innovate Ed for the, you know, four years that we were involved with them, is looking at a strategic focus, and then learning by doing, and, um, realigning and looking at evidence. So we're looking at our data. So let's go on in our CASP scores. So here we have our, this is our school year, um, this year. So we're looking at first through sixth grade. Um, this is DORA, so it's language arts, and so you'll see the different bands from high-frequency words all the way to comprehension. And so the first bar is, um, the first, um, in August, when they first come in, and then the second bar, where it says the two on it, is the second time they've taken the test. So one of the things that we're always proud to see is that, you know, the red goes down, that, um, those are the students that are emerging, and we wanna see a lot more proficient and above, obviously more blue and green, and we're always excited to see that, um, you know, our students are progressing gradually. We have a lot of work to do with spelling. And obviously, our comprehension scores are, um, also, um, increasing. And then we have our second, um, test that they take, or, um, is Adam, which is a math. And interestingly, I was looking at Adam, um, and I was gonna put it on the graph, but, you know, I have 10 minutes, so. I'm looking at when we first started taking LGL, I would see, and I would freak out, and my staff would freak out, we would see a lot more red because we didn't have an adopted math program, and we didn't have anything that was aligned, um, you know, K through six. And so it's exciting to see where we see so much more blue and, and green, and obviously the yellow, which is approaching proficient, and to see a lot less of the red, which is emergent. And, and these are our totals. This bar right here is the total, um, for the school, and it's first through sixth grade again, because Kinder usually doesn't take, let's go learn until, um, this spring. This year, we didn't get to take it because we've been in distance learning. So and then we looked at our subgroups, our EL, so this is, um, 2016, 17, all the way to last year, our ALPEC scores for this year, we were just finishing up ALPEC testing, where we went into, um, spring break, and then distant learning happened. So you can see that we have gradually, um, increased, um, how many students are reclassified as proficient English, um, speakers, which is exciting to see. Now you do see a dip between 17, 18, and 18, 19, and that's when, um, all the students went into, um, a computer-based, um, test instead of doing, um, the old cell test, so that's when we transitioned to that, and we figured we were gonna see a little dip, and, you know, that was expected. This is a lot of numbers, but, um, so these are our CASP scores, starting from 2016, um, all the way to last year. And then, of course, there are some breaks in between there because of the 2017 fires, so we didn't, um, take them. But the top, um, scores are our language arts, and then the bottom scores are our math. And again, we've been able to make study increases. Obviously, as a staff and myself, we would wanna see a larger, um, increase, but it's always exciting to see different increases as we put into play some strategic focus, um, strategies, and thinking for our kiddos K through six. And the way that we do it is, part of our work with Innovate Ed, is that we looked at vessel, visible, um, evidence of student learning. And so these are the categories that we look at, right? Close reading, communication, structure, um, collaboration, evidence-based arguments, and evidence-based writing. And for three years as a school, we focused on close reading. Um, and then we transitioned, if you remember my report from last year, we transitioned, transitioned to evidence-based writing and using RACE, um, to be able to, um, extrapolate evidence-based, um, data from things that kids were reading. So we thought the natural transition would be to take it into math. So we looked at, what does that look like? Evidence-based writing and math, and, um, still focusing on higher, higher-order thinking skills. So we decided to use cubes. Um, we love acronyms. Um, so cubes is just a way to be able to take a word problem, which is one of the things that students really struggle with in math, and be able to extrapolate evidence and really say, okay, what are they asking me, and what do I do? What operations do I use? K through six, having the same language, academic language throughout the grade level, so it becomes fluid, and it becomes automated for them. Because the tool is only as good as, um, the implementation, right? So we looked at K through first grade. Obviously, it's gonna look a little different than, um, our intermediate grades. So we looked at, okay, so we have cubes, what does that look like implemented in a K class? So our Kinder Academy teacher would do word problems, and the kids would find the numbers, whether they be in words or in actual numbers, and they would go through the process. So they're learning cubes, they're learning how to circle and underline all the way to first grade and second, and they would get practice about the year. Um, obviously, it's in fourth through sixth grade, we would still have to teach them how to use the tool, because some of them, this is new to them, right? So we would give them a, a problem like this, I promise I won't make you do it. Um, it's about fractions, so then they would get a graphic organizer that looked something like this, they would have to annotate their math problem. So they would copy it, underline, making sure they understood what the question is, and then they could show their work model, do their calculations. And then hopefully, by the end of the year, we were hoping that it would look something like this. Obviously, our process of inquiry was, um, interrupted. And so we, at different staff meetings, we would look at sample works that the kids were doing in the class, they would share in different grade-level collaborations. And so we were gonna look at to see if it was being effective, and if kids were able to, if we were to give them a word problem, could they cube it? Could they look at it, underline, and solve it? And then, um, we analyzed the impact, right? We still need to offer them a lot of support, tutoring, counseling, parent education, student access, and so on. And then, um, we looked at, what do we need to do? Is we probably need to continue this process, just because it was interrupted, I think that we were doing a lot of great work with it. Um, but any, like I said, any tool is only as good as, um, the But any, like I said, any tool is only as good as the implementation of it. I think our students need a lot more practice with it. And then really quickly, we'll touch on distant learning, because that's our reality right now. So here's just some examples of some of the things that our teachers are doing. They're using Google Classroom. They're using Seesaw. They're using ClassDogg. So we got to do a scavenger hunt with the fourth-grade class, which was a lot of fun, which I got to be involved in. They're doing math and recording how they solve their problems, still using cubes. And they are able to do some, still making sure that we're connecting with the students emotionally and not just academically. And then our counselor is also doing her Google Classroom check-ins with students, and it's available to them. So we're supporting them, not just in academics, but the social-emotional place. So here's just an example of an activity that she did with the primary kids, and then with the intermediate kids, because they're still reaching out to her via a Google Classroom. Parents are still reaching out to her and to myself, and so we want to be able to meet them, not just in their academics, but in their social-emotional needs, even though we are doing it from distance, right? Which is super hard, because we just want to help all the kids, and we can't do that right now. And that was really quick, and I timed myself, and that's about eleven minutes. Do you guys have any questions? And I think I can stop sharing my screen here, if I can.
So at this point, board, do you have any questions? No, I think we're going to hear all the principal reports first.
Great. So I will mute myself then.
So our next presentation will be done by Principal Wilson from Proctor Terrace Elementary. So with that, I turn it over to him.
Thank you so much. So first of all, I wanted to say good evening to Dr. Kitamora, President Fong, all members of the board and the cabinet. I will go ahead and share my screen. Sometimes when I switch over, it doesn't always come up right away. And let me move this into presentation mode. Okay. So you should be able to see me and see the presentation. Also, I wanted to say thank you very much to the board, acknowledge the leadership that you're showing during this time, and the thoughtful decisions that you're making. Also, just wanted to say one more time, congratulations to the Proctor Terrace nominees. That is Susan and Edward and Jayden. Thank you so much, you guys. We really love you. So this is Proctor Terrace Elementary presentation. My name is Brett Wilson, and I am the principal. This is my first year at Proctor Terrace, so I'm privileged to be part of a story that has been happening for a long, long time, and I'm privileged to tell it to you tonight. So the story of Proctor Terrace's success and stability over a long period. We have very experienced teachers. You can see here is a picture of the teaching staff. And a lot of those people have been there for more than twenty years. Their kids went to Proctor, deep roots in the community. So this is a caring culture, absolutely with a capital C. One of the things I want to talk about with you tonight, related to our SIPSA plan, is six major shifts, one that happened before I got to Proctor, some that are happening now, and these are planned to continue on. So anytime you see this wave icon, we're going to mention the six major shifts. I'll get back to this later. So I want to mention the strategic plan. You're familiar with this, the vision and the mission. But one thing I wanted to talk about is the alignment with the Proctor Terrace vision and mission. So you'll see similar phrases in there about building independent learners, adults who successfully responsibly contribute to the community, and also Proctor Terrace is a place that promotes safety and engagement, motivation, and discipline. So those things are very, very aligned. Strategic plan priorities at the district level, we're going to focus on priority five and six today in the presentation. That's where Proctor is at, as far as implementing the SIPSA, really looking at equity, excellence, family engagement, community partnerships, in a way that builds synergy for students and families at Proctor. You're also familiar with this, the inquiry cycle. So later on, I'm going to use some of the icons that are in here in the presentation to remind you about what our phases are and what we're doing in certain sections. So Santa Rosa City El Cap goals are also aligned with Proctor Terrace El Cap goals. Let me show you what it looks like on a daily basis. So if we're talking about coherent and rigorous, rigorous and relevant teaching, it's an example of that in a classroom. You can see the student is doing a project about the life cycle of an acorn to an oak tree. And this student has a wonderful, wonderful artwork and scientifically labeled diagram. And you notice it doesn't go linearly, but it's in a cycle. Shows that the acorn grows into a sapling, makes roots, grows into a tree, and then it continues again. Same thing that you see hands-on learning. Kids are participating in a really relevant and rigorous curriculum to actually grow seeds in the classroom. This is our Proctor Terrace SIPSA goal number one, all about instruction. Goal number two, increase student family engagement. You can see in this picture, as we transition into distance learning, you can see we've got four hundred and ten packets ready to send out to families for distance learning. This is our counselor, Nisha Benadetti Deal, and she created her own social-emotional learning packet. She's inserted into each one of these. So when the kids got this in the mail, not only did they get academic support, but they got social-emotional support. Just evidence of the Proctor staff going above and beyond. So let's now go back to the six shifts. The first one, establish win program, right, at our two-three level, meets changing needs in a flexible second and third grade classroom environment. Shift two, we've restructured the ELD program. So it incorporates new theory of action, and this is specifically for English language learner achievement. We've also targeted our SIPSA resources for academic intervention for our English learners. But in conjunction with our family engagement and wellness, we also have built-in supports for students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, or students with disabilities. And I want to emphasize, many of times, those students are also English language learners. So we want to build synergy between goal and goal two, to support all of these students. Shift four is using data multiple times per year, and I think in a unique way, not only for these student subgroups, but now for advanced learners as well. So to align with ALPS program and make sure that all of those kids are getting the things that they need in support and achievement. Shift five, expanded social-emotional support with our counseling program, our school-based therapy, and our restorative justice. As we transition into distance learning, you can see this is one of our Proctor students engaging in a mindfulness lesson in distance learning with one of the restorative people in the counselors. Shift six at Proctor is expanded partnerships with parent community organizations. Proctor's always been known for the garden. Now we're expanding that into a new partnership with the School Yard Habitat Program. The Sonoma County Gardeners are planning a pollinator gardening landscaping project that's already in motion. Creative Sonoma has been working with Proctor for a long time. We're expanding that into a new art and mural project that will happen in the fall when we return from distance. And now for everyone, and the other principal, I have mentioned this, the big shift is distance learning. So distance learning is this uncharted territory, but the story of Proctor Terrace is that teachers and staff are having success at implementing distance learning. You can see this was our distribution day at Santa Rosa Middle School. So we were distributing Chromebooks and individualized learning bags for each student. You see there in the background, there's nine Proctor teachers and staff there supporting kids. And here, you see a student in distance learning at home. They've got their setup. They're engaging with a first-grade lesson on telling time, one of our first-grade teachers. So let's go into the evidence. How do we know, right, where we're at with students, and what are the things that we need to improve on? Let me just show you the middle columns here, and then the far-left column. This is our S-Back ELA data from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen. If you look at the middle column, we've got the green and the blue band, which shows students that are meeting standards or exceeding the standards. When you go to that next year, those bands have grown. So that's progress for those students. But you still see, in the yellow and the red bands, there's almost a third of the students that aren't at the level that we want them to be. Many of those students are in those subgroups. Same thing with math. If you look at Proctor Terrace data, this middle column here, the blue bands and the green bands have grown from one year to the next and expanded. So we're achieving success with some of our learners, but these subgroups, there's still more than a third that we can give more attention to. Now, the good thing about Proctor Terrace is that our attendance and our ADA has been very consistent over time. So we have the students available to us. So we're confident that implementing some things to have equity and support across the board will have an impact. So what I decided to do, rather than show you a whole bunch of different slides about the different subgroups, is create a very, very simple summary. This is our S-Back ELA in math, over a three-year look back from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen. Now, if you look at the far-left column, and this is from the California School Dashboard, you would see, hey, maybe overall, in math and ELA, Proctor Terrace is having success. But then when you dial it back down to our Latinx students, our Hispanic students, our students that have, that are socio-economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities that are English learners, you find that there's still an opportunity to increase achievement for those students. And just like you saw, this is our "Let's Go Learn" local assessment. What I want to emphasize with this is that the green and the blue bands are still at a high level. So lots of kids proficient or above. But we have the ability now to dial down to the level of the standard of the individual child to make sure that every child's succeeding, and no kids are caught in the gaps. You see, this is our math assessment, even more of an opportunity with those learners that are not at the proficient level or above. So given all of that, right, what is our focus? Our focus continues to be differentiation, but differentiation across the board for those students in those subgroups. Increased rigor, because that's what motivates students to succeed. That's what students have actually asked for in the Youth True Survey. We continue to work on that cycle of inquiry with data specifically for those subgroups. And then we use our student family engagement, and SIPSA goal number two, to create that synergy between both of the programs to support those families. So when we implement and support, just going to go back to the six major shifts. This is the foundation of our program, the WIN program, the new ELD program, SIPSA-targeted funds, use of data in our inquiry, the social-emotional learning, and our community partnerships, including with the PTA, that provide an incredible amount of support to Proctor Terrace. Now, these are all equal right here. So this last slide I want to show you, before I get to our reflection and next steps, is I've created something, instead of talking about each shift, to give you an overall summary. The colors are just so you can see the different boxes, but the size of the box equals the success that we're having. WIN program, lots of success. Social-emotional learning builds a foundation and a connection between all these pieces. We're having success with English language learner students and families. We want to grow that more. We still need to focus on our student subgroups, grow that box larger. We still want to focus on support for students with disabilities. We're having more success with our CCD units, but as teachers get more effective in that, that impact is going to grow. You can see distance learning is our smallest box, or we'll continue to work with that, not only at the site level, but across the district. So here's our reflection, right? What do we need to keep on doing to be successful? Having a consistent cycle of inquiry and staff work, and that's every day in instruction. It's during our staff meetings, it's during our professional learning communities, it's in our own professional work and professional development at the district level. It creates synergy and coherence in that program. Our strength is excellence, and our stretch is equity. Not to say that there's not a focus on equity at Proctor Terrace, but we can dial that down to the individual student level, the individual standard level. We want to create a tier-two, tier-one support program that's effective for all kids. What is that that we're giving to all kids to allow them to succeed? We also know, though, that our distance learning right now and our financial resources are going to require some creative solutions. So continuing focus on differentiation, cycles of inquiry, creating synergy with that student family engagement and wellness. Our next steps, strengthen our multiple-tiered systems of interventions, especially for all students or most students, and create coherence for best practices for subgroups in each individual classroom, across grade levels, and across all of the grades. All right. Thank you very much for letting me tell you the story of Proctor Terrace. I appreciate your questions and feedback.
Thank you very much. Dr. Guzman?
Yes, so we will go to our last presentation tonight from Comstock Middle School, and Principal Hendrickson, I turn it over to you.
Thank you all so much. Let me get my screen shared here. I trust you can see this? Yes? All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening to our wonderful and compassionate superintendent, Dr. Kitamora, our hard-working and deep-thinking Board of Education and Cabinet, and to the members of the public for being here tonight. It's a very unusual setting for all of us, but it just really shows innovation, creativity that we all have as human beings. We're in the middle of an obstacle, but the Chinese character for obstacle has both crisis and opportunity embedded in it. And I know we can turn this crisis into opportunity. I know we have the will to do that. This is Comstock Middle School. Many of you are not familiar particularly with our school. Just gives you a little bit of an overview of some of the things that are meaningful to us. Our Maker Camp, our Purple and Gold, our sports program, the first Chromebooks that were bought in the district about six years ago, our band, and our performing arts, as well as our gardening program. So we invite all of you, when we're able to get out and about, to come on over and see what we're about. We have a lot of things going on at the school. Tonight, I want to talk about our interdepartmental school-wide literacy plan. This is a five-year plan. This has gone on, and it's very committed for all of us. I've been the principal at Comstock for nine years. Many of our teachers have been there over ten years. We have a very strong school community, a very strong commitment to this community. And we collaborate very strongly together. So this is a interdepartmental literacy plan. Our leadership team, consisting of the department chairs for English, history, science, and math, have devised this plan over the past five years. It's an instructional plan that targets growth in literacy, specifically academic vocabulary, expository reading and writing, unclaimed evidence, and reasoning. So we were guided by our consultant with Innovate Ed, but the work was generated by the team. We used our own formative and summative data, the state standards, and our own experience, as well as anecdotal knowledge of our school community's need to come up with a strong literacy plan. Okay, so let's go to the next slide. And it looks like I, okay, there we go. Of course, as with all of us, we're embedded in our theory of action. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get specific into the plan, as well as our strategic vision and mission. That is a five-year mission that you all put together. And our plan priorities. The member of the site councils created our SIPSA goals based on our El Cap. And I want to honor the people in our site council, our teachers, community member, who, Mike Frazina, who's also our Boys and Girls Club Director, our classified staff, our students, and our parents. Our goals that are in line with these El Cap goals. Our first one is college and career readiness, to provide a comprehensive instructional program that supports college and career readiness, provide support to cultivate measurable student growth and literacy. That's the goal we're focusing on tonight. And then our 21st century learning opportunities. We have a school community that needs us to straddle the digital divide and give them opportunities for technology, and we've done that quite successfully. Looking at coherence, our goal of demonstrating measurable student growth and literacy. Our data, we're going to be using statewide and local data, our own school-developed rubrics, the CASP and "Let's Go Learn" data. And our inquiry questions are, how can we increase literacy in academic vocabulary and expository writing? This ties right into our theory of action to lead and guide focused professional learning, which we did over the past five years very strategically. We're recognizing and implementing quality instruction, targeting and aligning our resources to focus on this, and using data to inform this inquiry cycle for growth. And our evidence of action is our goal, and we have demonstrated increased rubric scores and formative assessments. Our cycle of inquiry, we started with our goal, and our problem is cultivating measurable growth in student literacy. This is an ongoing goal for the Comstock community. And as you'll see by our demographics in a few slides, we have a pretty homogeneous group of students. There are mostly bilingual students that are straddling two languages in their middle school years, their elementary and middle school years, and so that has its own unique challenges. And our site leadership team collaboratively set these goals, and we created and adjusted the plans based on the results that we got. We've implemented. We look at student work, what's working, what isn't. And then based on that, we make suggestions, we tweak the process, we share insights with colleagues, with our TOSSAs, and the admin. with colleagues, with our TOSSAs and the admin. And then we continually repeat the cycle to see where we go next and how we continue to refine. So as we analyzed our evidence, we determined that only forty-eight percent of Comstock students nearly met, met or exceeded proficiency in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen state testing. And this is pretty much common throughout the years, whether we have done CASP testing or CST testing. We have a specific demographic that demonstrates a specific result in state testing. But not only our second language learners, which comprise about eighty-five percent, but our English-only students, which are only about sixteen percent, are pretty equivalent to what our bilingual students meet. So this is not only a second language issue. We really look at it more as an academic English issue. And that may result in some of, some of the particular challenges of students at the lower socioeconomic band in society having less opportunity, less support at home in terms of English or in terms of being able to focus on academics. Eighty-five percent of Comstock students are English learners or ARTHUP, and ninety percent of our students are bilingual. Also, students in middle school and ours especially struggle with incorporating evidence and reasoning into well-constructed paragraphs and essays. Our Let's Go Learn assessments show a specific need to develop academic vocabulary usage in speaking and writing. And we have only two years in a middle school, from elementary to high school, to prepare students for E through G expectations. So it's urgent for us to help with that.
Laura, can I have you stop for one second? Just one second. For those of you that were getting messages that you can't see the slides, up to the right-hand side, you'll see a little darkened gray button. It says swap, share screen with video. If you press on that, it'll be the PowerPoint showing bigger than the, than all of us. So it's swap, shared screen with video up to the right-hand side. For those people, I'm getting messages that they can't see the PowerPoint. Sorry, Laura.
That's fine, thank you. Okay. This is from the state dashboard showing basically that we have some ways to go to demonstrate, you know, proficiency. However, we are pleased that we have as much, at least nearly met as we've had in the past. And then we're looking at our Let's Go Learn data, and this was really significant for us because we were able to see that here on one, on D, we have about one hundred and twenty-eight students that have low vocabulary skills and low comprehension skills. And we have about one hundred and ten students here that have low vocabulary but high comprehension. And we found this to be very interesting because if their vocabulary skills are not able to decipher meaning, they're somehow constructing meaning through context. So that was a really significant point for us to look at how we could build context as well as build vocabulary at the same time. And then we do have a good number of students who are doing well in both. So this is kind of where we focused, was on developing vocabulary, but primarily also working on context clues around the vocabulary. So our phase two determining the focus is how can we provide collaborative instructional practices that helps students increase literacy in academic vocabulary, writing and comprehension? And how can we collaborate among the four core subject areas of English, math, history and science to provide a cohesive expository writing experience to support this literacy? And really, when you think about middle school, you know, students are coming in after sixth grade. They've been with one teacher. They've been, they have their own little cubby in their classroom, and then all of a sudden they're thrust into six periods, six different teachers, six different teaching styles, a lot of lack of coherence in some cases. Homework assigned without really working together necessarily. We decided that in order for our students, they need all the adults in the room to be on the same page, you know, and that we need to be teaching vocabulary consistently every week, the same vocabulary. We need to have the same vocabulary in terms of writing. So our ELA TOSSA, our TECH TOSSA and our department chairs, they really work together to start to translate the skill of teaching, writing and literacy into all the four core subject areas. And I want to give a lot of credit to particularly our math teachers who took some time out of their curriculum to teach writing. You know, it's, and this has been really a labor of love and a labor of great collaboration that started in two thousand fifteen. And, you know, you could read this in more detail. I don't want to take up the time to read it, but I do want to just highlight some points that, you know, we had structured academic conversations to support writing. We need to teach students to learn how to speak well in order to write well because there's a very strong correlation between what you can say is what you can write. You can't write what you can't say. So we need to provide more speaking in the classroom. We developed our rubric for claims, evidence and reasoning, and we decided to work on a curriculum called SERP, which I'll explain in a moment. Our TOSSA trained our teachers in step-up to writing as the writing model. She trained, she trained all teachers in the core subject areas. And the TECH TOSSA trained teachers in Google Classroom. So this entire project has been on Google Classroom. We've been on Google Classroom since about two thousand seventeen as a school. So this transition to distance learning was not as much of a challenge for us because we're already there. In two thousand eighteen, we extended evidence-based paragraph writing to school-wide essay writing. And our literacy TOSSA developed common formative assessments that mirrored S-SPAC so that students can practice. Because one of the challenges we see, we may get good results at school, but it's difficult a lot of times for our students to translate those results onto high-stakes state testing. We, this year, we collected a lot of evidence of student work as models for rubric scores with the goal of starting to work together to base, to calibrate our grading among the teachers so that we can have evidence-based grading and use that to inform our instruction. This past year, we kept two-week units, but we went back to the writing of paragraphs, except in the English classes. We shared student work after school meetings to facilitate discussion around assessment. We did literacy learning rounds with the TOSSA, Innovate Ed and myself. And we had some really good observations based on those learning rounds. This is SERP. SERP is Stanford Educational Research Project Multi-Subject Vocabulary and Expository Writing by Grade Level. It is a really wonderful free curriculum you can get online. It addresses a very interesting topic that students are engaged with, and it has lessons in English, math, history and science, the perfect thing for us. So the way we devised that was that we had Monday in English. We pushed out the units and digital outlined to classrooms. Students read and discuss the main ideas in the English classroom, using a lot of the academic conversation scaffolds to get them speaking and really generating ideas. Then Tuesday in history, students identify their claim, create a key star idea, find evidence and justify reasoning, both verbally and in writing in their history class. And there's a sort of an augmented, a special, you know, additional aspect of the topic that is history-related. Wednesday in math, they create a second key idea, find evidence and justify reasoning verbally and writing. And there is some kind of math problem that relates to the topic that they're studying that week. Same with science, they find another key idea, and it's also some kind of, something that relates to science. They go back to English on Friday, they write their paragraph and/or turn in detailed outline with three pieces of evidence and reasoning. Generally, the English teacher will do the grading so that the other core content areas could go back to their, their content. And we meet together quarterly or sometimes every other month to look at the paragraphs and the essays and grade together. All departments, we created a rubric. This is a post-it that we have hanging up in every classroom with the claim, evidence and reasoning, helpful hints and sentence starters. And then there is a grading rubric that students have also been involved in helping to create. And many times in class, students will use the rubric to grade each other's essays or paragraphs. We've seen, this is last year's data, not this, yeah, last year's, two thousand nineteen. We've seen this type of result every year that we've been doing this. Our vocabulary increased about seventeen percent, seventeen points. Comprehension about fifteen percent. And this has been consistent, we've seen the results. Students are actually definitely doing better by working on this. And they say so themselves. This is an internal survey where they, from first semester to second semester, they say they know how to write a evidence-based paragraph a lot better than when they started. So our discovery was that students feel confident in their ability to write an evidence-based paragraph, and the summative data supports this. We were able to exceed our outcome goals with increased scores. We streamlined the assignment by using digital outline accessible through Google Classroom that helps engagement and turn-in rates. And the discussion of these SERP topics like cloning, genetic testing, green technologies, is helping to build our students' critical thinking skills as well as enriching their vocabularies. This is what we think is a reason for improvement on the school-wide assessments. This is an example of just some data we collected during learning rounds. There's a visible evidence of student learning that the students are engaged in the SERP. They've identified evidence through their stores, post-its, highlights, graphic organizers. Students support a claim or develop their own claims and reason why we observed these things. And students collaborate with partners through deliberate conversations, the use of academic vocabulary and reasoning domain-specific. They're saying, you know, because, they're making a claim and they're saying because. So we've observed this as we go around doing the learning rounds. That is to meet our goals next year. We, you know, because of this extreme budget situation, we are going to lose our TOSSAs. We've done a lot of the groundwork work for us, so we're going to need to figure out how our leadership team could pick up the slack there. We've used common planning time to facilitate professional development, and while we're rolling it back right now, we hope to reinstate it again. Hopefully, we'll have paid after, some way we can roll, rolling preps or we need to find somebody, if we have to paste people after school since we're not going to have the common planning time, which our school used very well and was very teacher-driven, but very goal-oriented, but very responsible use of common planning time at Comstock. Potentially a loss of consultant who helped guide us. We find that kind of person coming in from the outside valuable. They give us a broader view, they have a more neutral view. As they go into classrooms, they're not a peer, they're not an evaluator. They bring in state best practices and data. Can we start this if we are in distant learning in the fall? This is a question we will need to address over the summer, depending on what occurs. Our goals for next year would be to continue training for new teachers. Currently, we're using Google Classroom. How do we introduce in the fall, as I mentioned, to incorporate more structured academic speaking into the process, which really is a lot, is teacher-driven and dependent on the culture of a specific classroom? How do we address more academic speaking and honor the individual teaching styles of our teachers? We want to look at adapting a modified rollout for seventh grade, continue to collaborate using the rubric, develop a plan for learning rounds that involves teachers, and continue to venture outside, this is important, of the SERP environment to identify and use claims, evidence and reasoning opportunities in subject area materials. We want to train students to look at that outside of this scaffolded material. And how can we translate our results into increased statewide test scores? That's really an issue that I've seen over the years, that it's been a challenge for our population. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we do turn it over to the board. Thank you. So board, on discussion items like this. We have questions, and then the public gets to comment, and then we have discussion. And so, does anyone have questions right off the bat for any of the principals? I don't see anybody's hand moving. So let's see, moderator, do we have any public comments on E4? So we're going to ask anyone who wants to comment on item E4 to raise your hand. Click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen, please. Please, only click your hand if you want to comment on this item. President Fong, we see no hands right now.
Do we have somebody who wanted to comment on this item before? She's not there anymore.
I believe she wanted to comment on the next item.
Okay, all right. Board members, any discussion? Director Sheffield?
Thank you all for your presentations. And Principal Wilson, nice to see you. It's been a while. I got so used to seeing your face on a daily basis. My, how you've grown. I want to thank you for your presentation in particular because I appreciate that you had highlighted support programs and social-emotional learning in your presentation. And I just think that without a doubt, it's going to be a long and disappointing summer for many. And just because of this reality, I think the district really needs to acknowledge the impact that the crisis is having on kids. And, you know, as we look to the months and, you know, who knows how long, really, the unforeseeable. We need to just really think and take a deeper look at the value of having in place the supports, particularly around, you know, as you presented, the social-emotional learning side of it. The work that NISA and other counselors do. Right now, I love that the schools are incorporating some behavioral practices in the packets that are coming home and in the online instruction as well. We use those, it works to an extent. A lot of times, my kid's outside running around to try to, try to, you know, figure out something to do to manage his mind, his body and what's going on and things that he can't process right now. So, you know, moving into, into the start of the school year in the fall, I think we're really going to have to start looking at this in ways that we can be creative, innovative, and just, again, appreciating the value of having these services.
Thanks for those comments.
Thank you, Director Sheffield. And any other board members, discussion? Seeing none, I will speak up. Thank you, Principals Diaz, Wilson and Hendrickson for those really thorough reports. I really liked seeing the, the nice numbers that you showed us with the formative assessments, the formative assessments that you guys were doing, the internal ones. I have a question for Principal Hendrickson at Comstock. You made a point that you had two years with your students, seventh and eighth grades, to prep for high school, prep for the A to G, the new, the new graduate requirements. Can you tell me that, how many different feeder school districts come into Comstock?
Well, one of the fortunate middle schools in that most of our students come from Santa Rosa City Schools. We have Biella. Almost all the students from Biella, from Lehman, from Monroe, and about half from Steel Lane come in. So that's really great articulation for us. And honestly, when we look at our CAPS scores, we look from fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. We want to get a little bit of sense of a longitudinal study so we can have a sense of where our students are coming in. We do get some students coming in from Proctor Terrace, I mean, I'm sorry, from Pinarolavet, but primarily went from Santa Rosa City Schools.
That's, that is a positive thing because I know that we have many different feeder districts. And if we're going, we're feeding into our middle schools, seventh and eighth, and they're coming from all different schools, not our district, not doing things the way we decide we wanted to do things for how we believe teaching and learning should go. I think it's more difficult for our middle schools. So the good work that those four schools are doing, very good.
Yes.
Principal Diaz, you, yes.
I'm always happy to see her work because I know that kids are coming to us with all that great work, so.
Thank you both.
Principal Diaz, did you have something to say?
Oh, I was just saying thank you.
Also, I wanted to comment that I really like the way you mentioned that math teachers are doing more writing, which I believe is, should be true because writing is communication and communication is learning, and we should all be doing writing. Kids who said to me, well, this is math, I shouldn't be writing, it's like, no, that is not true. So breaking down those silos between the disciplines is always a good thing. All of you, I saw a lot of growth over time. And also, I want to make a comment about assessments. So this will be the second year that we have not done the state assessments. Is that right, Superintendent Kurnamora?
Second year, not in a row, but our second year.
Right, and, and we know that the universities, the UCs in California have suspended the SAT and ACT as entrance exam, kind of, for, for admittance for, through two thousand twenty-four. And they are actually thinking about doing their own or something different that is maybe more authentic, and I see Superintendent Kurnamora crossing her fingers. So I would also suggest, having watched many, many students take the state assessments that were federally mandated, those autopsy assessments, we call them, because it's after the fact and we don't get the results till way later, that the formative ones that we use to assess how kids are learning so that we can continue to adjust our teaching is really where we want to be. And let's hope that maybe these state assessments And let's hope that maybe the state assessments, the autopsy assessments way late, that the kids really, we have to bribe them to take them. It takes up a lot of instructional time. They're not interested in them. It doesn't go on their transcripts. That's that's not a good use of educational time, I will just say. The time that you're doing yourselves right now, principals and teachers on the DORA and the ADAM really helps us a lot more. So keep that up. Good job. Thank you. Dr. Guzman, was there anything else on that?
No, thank you so much. Appreciate the comments.
Dr. Conamora, anything else on that? Okay. Thank you, principals. We are now moving on to E5. It's a public hearing. It looks like we are doing charter renewals, Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts, first up.
Yes, the public hearings will be back to back and then we will go into the action items.
Oh.
Lori Kowalczak has her hand up. You're on mute, Lori.
I'd like to do an interpreter switch before we move to the next item.
Good idea. Thank you. We'll take a second for that.
I'm ready.
If you'd like to look in the panelist area, board members, you can actually see the switch happen between the two interpreters because a little icon switches to the other. You may not, but in case you were interested.
TMI. I'm trying to keep the agenda straight here.
See, yeah, the little flag went to the other interpreter in the panelists. So that's how you know that the switch has been made. I'm a geek. I like it.
We are good to go. Thank you.
So we're going to do them back to back. So we're starting with Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts.
Correct. So I will have you open the public hearing.
What does that mean? Are we talking about?
You, you say, Lori, that you're going to open public hearing and then turn it over to the moderator to see if there's anybody who would like to speak.
In the gavel.
Yes, Lori just told me to make sure that I specifically opened the public meeting. Okay. Now.
And the moderator, call on the moderator, Lori.
Moderator Diaz, are there any public comments?
So I'm going to ask, I see no hands raised at this time. Please raise your hand. We have a hand raised. I see it. Please raise your hand only if you want to comment on item E5, the public hearing on Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts at this time. And also, I'm wondering if Ms. Arango, who wanted to make a comment earlier, still does. So please, if you want to comment on this item, raise your hand using the button at the bottom of your screen. And right now, I see that Marra is has her hand raised. And I am going to unmute your microphone on my end. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted on your end, and please state your full name for the record before you make your comment.
Good evening. My name is Maura Ryan Donahue. I'm an educator and a former employee of Santa Rosa City Schools. And for the past 11 years, at least one of my three children has been a student at Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts. In my 25 years in education, I've seen and experienced a wide variety of schools and programs. And I'm very proud to say that SRCSA can be a very rich and inspiring learning environment for its students. What I've observed of the actual integration of the arts with traditional curriculum in the early grades, it's just artistry itself. Thank you, Ms. Rains and others. However, beyond those beautifully crafted lessons and the caring teachers who taught my children in those primary grades, my family has also experienced hurt and damage when SRCSA failed to follow their own policies as laid out in their term of charter document, which leads me to wonder whether the charter should be renewed. Due to the limitations of time, rather than explicating each situation, I will instead list policies listed in the term of charter document, which either were not followed or grievously violated during my family's experience at SRCSA. There were multiple denials to hold a student study, student success team meeting despite universal concerns for two of my children. There was a denial of a request for evaluation for special education eligibility by an interim principal despite being told, quote, "My child was the lowest in the grade for two years in a row." There was no response from an administration when my child was harassed, bullied, and threatened due to her religious beliefs. There was fault failure to follow the discipline's procedures regarding truancy. This led to a violation of civil rights in denying equal access to school programming based on disability. There was discrimination based on mental illness, disability, including harassment and bullying of my child by her teacher. Administrators unwillingness to meet with the parents following disciplinary action. A failure of the school and district administrators to respond to parent calls, emails, and letters attempting to address the issues. And a failure of the arts charter and the district to follow procedures when complaints were made. Finally, there's just the hypocrisy of the statement that SRCSA is committed to restorative practices when some teachers and administration are unwilling to participate in a restorative circle when it's requested by a family. Without the actual experiences explained, these bulleted points may sound hyperbolic and inflammatory, and I'm sorry for that impression, but these are true. It's also true that all of these occurred before the current leadership came to SRCSA. However, as much as I love all that SRCSA was intended to be and all hey, it hoped it could be, my family has experienced so many instances where the proper procedures and even the law were not followed. And I've seen very little effort from the district administration to appropriately address our concerns that there has been damage done. It isn't so much that I'm not in favor of the renewal of the charter, as I believe in their mission and vision. But it would be nice if the district and staff put as much effort into actually following their term of charter as it took to create that document. Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Moderator, do we have other comments?
Yes, I see another hand raised, and this is Maria Arango.
Can I enter for a second? I believe that's for the next one. I believe it's for the French-American. So if there's no more public comments for the arts charter, then you close it and then you open up the French-American just to follow the process.
Moderator, any others?
We see no other hands.
All right, so public comment on E5 is over. And we are going to open up public comment for E6, French-American Charter School.
All right, and I do see Ms. Arango, Maria Arango. I am going to open your microphone, and I believe she would use the Spanish interpreter that's in the English channel. So if you could, please make your comment a few sentences and then allow it to be interpreted. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted. And. So Ms. Arango's hand was not raised or she left the meeting. So we have moved Ketzia into the meeting.
Yes. Thank you too. Let me talk. So my name is Ketzia Rofas. I'm a parent at the Surfax. I'm also a third grade French teacher. And today, I would like to put emphasis on three aspects that have led our work in the rewriting of the charter to serve all students. So I would like to talk about our international vision, our pedagogical strategy, and finish with how we serve the ELL community. About our international vision, learning about the French language and culture is a channel that we use to prepare our students to have an open mind, to be eager to meet and interact with people who have different backgrounds, languages, and cultures. There is no hierarchy between languages or cultures. And in accordance to our district policy, we teach that we are all special or all different, and each of us has great value. So how we have developed our pedagogical strategy to serve all students. One of our key strategies is translanguaging pedagogy. The founder of this pedagogy is Ophelia Garcia, who was herself an ELL student. It consists in constantly translating, comparing the languages, being playful with them, valuing the use of the home language in some parts of the school activities. Then the students can fully appreciate and embrace their own identity and acknowledge positively the existence of many other identities. It aligns well with the French model of active pedagogy that makes the students an actor of their learning. It favors authentic situation of research and investigation, and the student learn by making. Again, we aim at giving back students their voice and help them become critical thinkers and independent learners. As a Californian public school and accredited by the French Ministry of Education, we have developed a harmonious curriculum. It is really the reflection of the many similarities, complementarities, and aspirations that both programs have. Co-teaching and differentiation are also part of our program. I will finish by talking about our well-loved ELL community. Our data shows that ELL students have been massively reclassified over the last two years. The SBAC results also show that our students are striving. We see our ELL students as an asset to our school. What they don't know yet in English is just the sign that an awesome cultural treasure and international experience are hidden there. And we are very happy to offer them an opportunity to extend their international experience and learn a third, a fourth, and sometimes a fifth language at a very young age. So thank you to give a Surfax the opportunity to exist. Thank you to the districts, and we will continue to serve all students.
Thank you very much. Moderator.
President Fong, I see Ms. Arango's hand is not raised, but I'm going to bring her into the meeting for a moment just to make sure that she did not want her hand raised.
Estoy acá.
I am here.
Soy María Arango.
I am María Arango.
Hello? Sí, estoy yo acá. Ya me escucho?
Sí, le estamos escuchando.
Okay. Mi comentario básicamente es que tengo dos hijos en quinto grado, ellos son gemelos. Ellos, yo recomiendo ampliamente la escuela charter, Santa Rosa, French-American Charter School, porque mis hijos personalmente he visto cómo se han favorecido al aprender un idioma adicional al inglés y español.
Okay.
Dame un segundo, por favor. Este solo hecho de aprender un idioma adicional les ha brindado habilidades y beneficios en su desarrollo.
Okay.
Mis hijos se han reclasificado en el cuarto grado, lo que significa que el aprender un idioma temprana, un idioma adicional o dos idiomas adicionales les da un aprendizaje temprana.
Señora Arango, por favor, pare.
Una opción para aumentar el éxito académico.
Okay. My name is María Arango. I have two sons in fifth grade. They are twins. I widely recommend the charter school, the French-American Charter School, because the experience has been very positive for them. They not only have acquired the English language, but now the French. So they have three languages now. They were reclassified in fourth grade. And this proves that an early exposure to another language allows the human beings to learn quickly and to learn at their best.
Continuo?
Sí, por favor.
Okay. Además, he visto como el personal de maestro son excelentes profesionales. En los diferentes años que mis hijos han estado, he visto la capacidad que tienen para ellos actuar y manejar los alumnos. Entonces pienso que la escuela ha sido muy favorable en todo sentido.
Through all of these years that my children have been at the school, I have seen the excellency of the faculty. They are great teachers. They learn, they know how to manage the, not only the teaching, the academics, but how to manage everything that is around the life of the school. It has been a very pleasant experience to see the teachers so professional, so excellent.
Por lo tanto, solicito a que tengan en cuenta esta parte, que yo he estado involucrada en la escuela durante todos los años que llevan los cinco años que llevan en la escuela y he visto cómo el hecho de que los niños tengan una educación bilingüe, no solamente mis hijos, sino todos los que están actuando como aprendices de inglés, esto les ha favorecido de mucha manera.
Since I have been involved.
Pues eso es todo por el momento.
Since I have been involved for many years with the school in my role as a mother, I want you, I want to request you to please take in consideration these comments because I have not only seen the benefits in my own children, but also in my children's peers. Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias a todos por escuchar.
Thank you very much to all of you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you very much, Ms. Moderator, are there other comments on E6?
I'm going to ask, is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? The public hearing for the French-American Charter School renewal. Please raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this item, E6. And President Fong, I see no more attendees with their hands raised.
All right, so right now, we are going to close the public hearing on E6. There's the gavel. And we are going to move on to E7, which is Action, Charter Renewal for the French-American Charter School.
Yes. Hi, good evening again. In front of you, you do have the charter renewal. This is for renewal five years. Every five years, each charter school, dependent or independent, must go through a renewal process. And it also must address the 16 elements in the charter that is dictated by ed code. Some of the highlights in the charter renewal, the French-American charter, has designated co-teaching and plural lingualism as necessary and impactful instructional strategies for their dual-language environment. They've increased an emphasis on STEAM through bilingual co-taught lessons. They're also developing a link between civics from the French curriculum and CEL from Common Core through plural lingualism and fostering a respect for diversity to augment academic success and also increase collaboration through the co-teaching model and establishing built-in planning time. So Principal Anderson did work with various stakeholders as they moved through the process to maneuver through this rewrite and renewal of the charter. And with that, I turn it back over to the board.
Board members, do you have any questions? Or discussion comments? And I'm, I've got to scroll through my screen. That would be Director De La Cruz.
I just want to say thank you to, I'm sorry, I'm going to get your name wrong, the teacher from the French-American Charter School who presented for really articulating a philosophy about English language learners that I would love to see articulated throughout every single school, even those that are not charter language charters. And I just really appreciated the way that you framed the value that kind of getting kids to be excited about their own cultures allows them to be excited about other cultures and just grows that appreciation in themselves and for others. I just really, really special. Thank you.
Please come visit.
Merci. I would love to.
Other board members? I don't see, if I don't call on you, because I don't have you on my screen, there's like split screen here. All right. I will say about our charters, we're very proud of our charters, the dependent charters that we have.
that we have, and the good work they're doing, and actually, you know, the number of kids who want to go to these charters, and the incredible leadership the principals and the teachers are showing in these charters. It's different ways to learn, different ways to serve children in our district. Charter schools throughout the nation are controversial, but we're very proud of ours because they are ours, and they are part of the whole, and they're not for-profit, and they're not private, and there's a lottery system, so it's fair, and we really value how we can try to get all kids in. You don't need a test to get in, you don't need to be in a certain zip code to be in, you don't have to write essays to get in, and other charter schools are like that. So, thank you. I like that policy. All right, so this is an action item. Charter renewal for the French-American Charter School, five years. That would be Director Medina.
Actually, just have a question for Superintendent Kinnamora, or whoever. The new laws around charter schools, what impact does this have on these renewals right now, or is there any impact that's going to, that these charter renewals maybe add special language that went into it, or are those issues that we're going to address later on?
So, there are no laws that have gone into effect as of yet. Those, for these renewals, those new laws will not go into effect until July 1st, 2020. So, whatever renewals we have coming up in the future, they will fall under those new laws.
So, it went, the residency of the charter, is that what you're talking about, Director Medina? The law that went into effect January 1st of 2020?
Yeah, charters existing within another...
Another boundary, another elementary. The French and arts charter both reside, are located within elementary boundaries of the district. So, this would not impact them. This won't impact them. We don't have to apply to another district or request from the district to approve them being in their district boundaries, because they're in our district boundaries.
All right, I'm entertaining a motion on this one. Director Sheffield.
I just, I move for the approval of Item E7, Charter Renewal for the French-American Charter.
And second by?
I second.
Director De La Cruz. Lori, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Hi.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
We.
President Fong?
Aye. All right, passes, five more years, French-American Charter School.
Nice to see you, Evelyn.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you, Principal Anderson. We are moving on to E8, Action Item, Charter Renewal for the Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts.
Yes, good evening. So, we're bringing this forward just like the previous. This is a renewal for five years. They have to follow the 16 elements, and some of their highlights are a clear articulation of arts integration and that definition, adding 21st century skills, talking to and instructing parents and coaching them about arts integration methodologies, adding some information regarding CCD, aligning the, to our EL Master Plan, and also how to address racial and ethnic balance. This is Principal Vogel's second year, and she has done a very good job in taking sort of the arts charter to the next step. So, as many of you know, this was my baby, and so I'm very proud of the work that's been going on at the Arts Charter under her leadership. And so with that, I turn it over to the board.
Okay, I forgot again. We have questions, and then is there public comment on action item? So, board, do you have any questions? I think not. Moderator, are there any comments on this agenda item?
If anyone would like to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. And there are no hands raised. President Fong.
All right. One more thing about charters, these charters of ours, they have really been parent-driven. That's really remarkable in how much ownership the parents are taking of the charters. And again, Dr. Guzman, for the founding principal, congratulations, Principal Vogel and all the staff. All right, I can entertain a motion for this. Charter renewal for Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts.
I move that we renew the charter for Santa Rosa Charter School for the Arts.
I'll second.
Thank you. Director McCormick and Director Sheffield. Lori, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
And President Fong?
Aye. Congratulations. Charters renewed five years each from now on. Excellent. Yay.
I also want to add that Principal Vogel and Principal Anderson have worked tirelessly in both of their schools, being new principals, and really building a culture that is conducive and matches the mission and vision of this district, and they are to be commended, and I'm very, very proud of them.
All right, moving on. We are now looking at Item E9. It's a public hearing, Santa Rosa City Schools District Sunshine Proposals for Contract Reopeners with the California School Employee Association, Chapter 75, for 2020-2021. Diane, did you want to say anything?
Oh, no, I was just taking a deep breath in and going to help remind you to open the public hearing.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing on Item E9. Bam.
Moderator, would you please check for any public comment?
I will do that. Please raise your hand if you'd like to comment during the public hearing, Item E9. Click the button on the bottom of your screen that says Raise Hand if you'd like to comment. And I see no hands raised. President Fong.
All right, we're closing the public comment, closing the public hearing on Action on E9. We are now going to do E10, which is an action item, Santa Rosa City Schools District Sunshine Proposals for Contract Reopeners with the California School Employee Association, Chapter 75, for 2020-2021.
Thank you, President Fong. Assistant Superintendent Specter will be presenting this action item.
Thank you, Superintendent Kinnamora, and again, good evening, members of the public, and President Fong and members of the board. And this is an item that we bring forward for your consideration to open sunshine or contract reopeners with CSEA. It's a process similar that we use with our other bargaining unit, SRTA, and CSEA brought forth their openers about a month ago, and these are ours. And so, the items that we would like to open are Article 6, Hours and Overtime, Specific to Shifts and Schedules, Article 11, Leaves, Vacation Leave, Article 12, Holidays, which in the CSEA world is the calendar, Article 13, Compensation, Specific to Fringe Benefit Insurance, Article 14, Pay and Allowance, which is the regular rate of pay or compensation as well, Article 15, Employee Expenses and Materials, Specific to the Use of Technology and Equipment, and Appendix E, which is the reclassification process. And so, our recommendation is to take action on this, and with that, I turn it over to the board.
Board members, questions? Speak up if I don't see your name, your hand. Okay, no questions? Moderator, do we have any comments? Public comment?
Yes, we do. We have one hand raised. And it's Tammy Alfonso. Tammy, you'll be the next to comment. I'm opening your microphone. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted, and please state your name for the record before you make your comments.
Hi, Tammy Alfonso. Santa Rosa, Chapter 75, Chief Negotiator. We look forward and encourage the board to approve the openers of the district so that we can begin this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alfonso. Moderator, any other comments on this?
If there's anyone who would like to comment on E10, please raise your hand at this time. And seeing no hands, I turn it back to President Fong.
All right, public comment on E10 is over. Board, any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to, for Action on the District Sunshine Proposals, Santa Rosa City Schools District Sunshine Proposals for Contract Reopeners with CSEA. And that would...
Don't move.
That would be Jill McCormick, and seconded by De La Cruz. Lori, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. Thank you, that passes. It's two, some great discussions on that. We are moving on to Item E11. This is Discussion. It is the third update by our superintendent on the continuity of operations and distance learning, which I call, of course, remote emergency teaching, during the shelter-in-place orders and planning for the 2020-21 school year. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Fong. There are rest of the cabinet to be ready for your area to give update to the board. I will say that I now know what it feels like to have multiple sets of parents. We have the federal government, we have the state government, and we have the county government, all seemingly making decisions, not necessarily in alignment with each other, and expecting us to be able to get schools started on less resources than we were going to have before. So, having said that, once again, I find myself as a superintendent of Santa Rosa City Schools, having to forge ahead to make the best decisions possible for the district, for our students, for our families, and our staff. Today, we had a meeting scheduled with Dr. Mace, the Department, the Public Health Office or Officer. She unfortunately had to cancel due to an emergency, and so the meeting that was going to help us make some decisions about what is to come has been put on hold until tomorrow at 2:30, when we will be, have a meeting rescheduled with her. I will say once again that it is incumbent upon the policymakers to understand the fact that making decisions about medical issues is not what I was trained to do, and it's not something I want to do. We must depend on those experts, to be experts, and we must depend on our leadership to listen and understand that in the case of Sonoma County, in the case of, I can only speak for Santa Rosa City Schools, putting 16,000 students and 1,600 employees at risk is not something I will choose to do. And so, as we move forward with these updates, you may hear me say this over and over, in hopes that it will get through to the community, that we must make decisions on the best information possible that will keep our kids and families and communities safe. And I worry about that. I worry about that when we are reopening things, and when we haven't completed as many tests that we should have completed. You know, we have a site at Santa Rosa High School that is testing as well, and so together we must be diligent in making the best decisions possible based on a set of criteria that ensures safety. So, having said that, we will meet with Dr. Mace tomorrow. I have forged ahead, looking at the orders that were last ordered, to set up a protocol of self-assessment, because one of the things that we want to do is we want to allow our teachers to get back in their classrooms, especially those that are retiring and resigning, to be able to, you know, get some closure, and as someone said earlier, we really don't have much time to do that. And so, you'll be hearing from me after tomorrow about information, and we also have some plans for getting teachers back in their classrooms, but we also want to talk with SRTA about it tomorrow. And Thursday is our regular collaboration meeting, and we want to, we want to get their feedback on the plans we have. So, I kind of jumped ahead into the second one, so I will turn it back to Dr. Guzman, who will talk about the LCAP and the changes there, and then I'll interject as we go and talk particularly about the committee to return to school. Dr. Guzman?
Yeah, thank you so much. So, as part of the order from the governor, there has been sort of a hold on the LCAP, but there has been also a smaller report that we are going to have to submit to, which you will see in June. It only has to be 300 words. It really addresses three different areas, how we've done with our distance learning, how we've done with feeding our students, and also how we've addressed childcare as a district, which you'll hear as part of the update tonight, which also then begs the question, so when does the LCAP have to be completed? So, we'll really then have another cycle, which will come forward in December, which will then look at the LCAP, and then again, it'll come back in July. So, it's going to be interesting. We're going to see the LCAP a lot. We look forward to, as we maneuver in the fall, in coming back together with all of our stakeholders to really look at developing that plan. So, that's sort of where we are with the LCAP currently.
Okay, thank you. I talked about the teacher and student access to site will be, that plan will be coming out in the next day or two. Rick, do you want to just do a bit of a trailer to the next item, to what you're going to talk about in the next item?
Sure. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Kinnamora, President Fong. I will save the information about the budget until E12, when there's significantly more information in that item, specifically focused to California and the deficit California's facing, as well as the impact to all school districts, and specifically Santa Rosa City Schools. A couple of other areas that I did want to touch on on this update, excuse me, was once again to commend CNS and the work that they're doing to provide food on the two-day-a-week schedule now with multiple meals per handout. As of this afternoon, and we don't have all the members in from today, we're up around 146,000 meals served to Santa Rosa City School families, which is very impressive, and once again, my admiration and thankfulness to those CNS staff members that are continuing to do that, to make sure that food is getting to those families. CNS is also still working with Redwood Empire Food Bank, not only for the distributions that are continuing to go on during the school year, but also for planning during the summer, with SRCS still planning to offer a summer meal program in coordination with Redwood Empire Food Bank. The other area that I wanted to just touch on again and continue to talk about was what I'll just brand, you know, the technology team that's providing, you know, devices, both computing and internet hotspots for students and staff, and continuing to work on other programs and services to not only make this experience easier, but in preparation for what we need. and continuing to work on other programs and services to not only make this experience easier, but in preparation for what we may experience in the 2020-21 school year. A lot of great work is happening there. This week, the Technology Department was able to roll out a support mechanism for students and parents to be able to call in and create a help desk ticket that can be assigned so that those people at home can also receive, albeit limited, some support if they're having issues connecting or giving to district resources during this time. So a big thank you to them as well, along with MNO and the rest of the departments that are continuing to keep sites tidy, make sure that things are taken care of, and with the ultimate goal preparing for a return to school next year. That's my update for now. Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. A couple of things that I want to go over. I want to first of all, thank our staff as well in the areas that Student Family Services cover, special education staff. You know, I got to let you know that we're doing remote IEPs like it's no tomorrow. We're having translator, we're having our site administrators stepping up, providing full service, you know, besides the lesson plans and everything that you've already talked about with teachers. You know, we have speech teachers that are doing therapy online, school psychs that are trying to do assessments. In our mental health world, you know, we're continuing services with our through our Intervent Wellness Center, and we've been serving over 300 clients that we continue in our ERM's counseling, our SAY work, Humana Dodd, and then with our own elementary counseling. So we've really stepped up and geared into that. And there's been some transitions that are going to be very positive for next year. We can click into that mode much easier. So you know, that's been working out really nicely for us. A big thing I want to take a moment and talk about is the work we've done with attendance in that learning plan. We had a very systematic way of reaching out to people, students and families that didn't, weren't making contact with everybody. And we developed a chart to make sure we're tracking all that. And so let me share a little bit of that. We've kind of given some preliminary data on that. But Monday, we sent out 95 letters, so 97 letters to families that we were concerned we didn't have contact with. So on my screen share, sorry, I got to throw stuff to the side so I can see my own screen here. You will see the subcat, the subgroups that we normally look at for anything, any demographic differences.
But
yeah, I'm going to scroll to the top. So by school, we put that all together. And those are the totals that we are looking at. So 97 families we sent registered letters to. And the registered letter is a tiered support that we've been doing. We've been using our wonderful family engagement facilitators to call families, to reach out to them. And when we still have no contact, we're using registered letters. And then from that feedback, we might actually be going out next week to households and really trying to find out what's going on. So we've broken out that demographic bias example, 21 of the 97 are special education students. As you know, in the sub-demographic data that we always look at, our district-wide population is 14%. So that is a disproportionality of 7% as an example. And I've kind of colored dashboard these in similar ways to areas that you can see that we normally would do. And so you're familiar with that. So we're disproportionate in our homeless population in this area. We're disproportionate in our Hispanic families that are not reaching out and communicating. And our socioeconomic, we are disproportionate. And somewhat as much, not as much in our EL populations. So, you know, I know, Board, you are very interested and concerned as we are. And I really want to appreciate Patty Turner and the Sale Group, which is a school attendance improves learning. They have literally been week by week gathering that data, coordinating it. And then Monday, you know, we put together 97 registered letters to get out to these families in one last attempt to really find out what's going on. So when we get the results of that, obviously, we'll do a summary to you all next time. But of course, we are very concerned that those are families that have left us. We've already documented 44 families that have left officially from us since spring break at a loss of about $350,000, $346,000 so far. And so, you know, we're really concerned what that number is. And this is another triangulation of data that really helps us figure out our progress and our status for next year. So again, my hats off to Patty Turner and her crew for really giving us some great data.
I think that this also this data that what we need to recognize, I mean, almost literally is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, out of our nearly 16,000 students, 1,500 and something, we've got it down to 97 students that we've not had contact with.
Agreed. And the 44 that have left.
Right. But I want to make sure that we understand it and the people in the audience understand that, which is tremendous.
Yeah.
That's a level of detail, you know, for our students that I couldn't be more happy about in terms of really pinpointing where kids are. And then secondarily, can you scroll up? The correlation, I would think that the medical world might find this correlation interesting about where which high schools the higher numbers are. And any kind of correlation to their data about any clusters or tracing or contact that they are doing.
Yeah.
Haven't been asked about it, but we do have the data that I will present to Dr. Mace tomorrow. So
Yeah. And this, of course, is not finalized data. These could be families that reach back out to us and, you know, find out what's going on. So obviously, at the conclusion of the year, we'll have more accurate data and we'll provide a summary to the board.
But this is very, very detailed data that I'm super proud of the team.
As we are. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, Steve, on some of the attendance. I know that you had brought this up in previous discussions about what the contact with students and families looks like and why it looks like that. Can you go over that a little bit?
Yeah, you know, we were trying to be very inclusive, of course, as we designed in the attendance category and the participation. So we had early instances where a teacher was not having contact, but our counselors or clinicians were. And so, you know, we included that, that that student is not disconnected. They may not be engaged in the classwork that week, but they are engaged and connected to us. And so that was counted. A family that had an IEP, you know, that maybe they didn't engage that week with the teacher or, you know, of all their teachers, but they engaged with us. And that's kind of the big thing that we were doing. We were just really hoping on that we wouldn't lose students as they left the school, they wouldn't lose connection to them. That was the strongest piece. So that's what it really was helpful for us to kind of read through those comments, have everyone collect the data and really do a good job of organizing it, you know? And that's our biggest fear that people and families are leaving the community, of course, and leaving for perhaps economic reasons. And that, those answers are going to drive some of our decisions we may have to make budgetarily here in the future.
Now, then, are you hearing from teachers as well? Or how is that information then? How how does that reporting process get to your level?
Yeah, no, literally, on this document later is people are making comments and notes in about each kid. So, you know, without, I can't give it, I can't click to the other tabs because it would show student information.
Yeah.
You know, literally, we are documenting for three weeks, still no contact or reach out, a phone call, emails. You know, family engagements are going through, you know, the emergency cards they have and reaching out and just trying to do what we can to find those kids. When we started this a couple of weeks ago, it was 300 and something, 303. And so each week, we've whittled that down because we've found them participating someplace for us. So that's, that's just the work of everyone combined. Our school counselors have been reaching out. This is their family engagements. Any little contact, we've been trying to document that here.
Okay. And then what is, I'm sorry. Couple more questions. What are the state requirements around attendance reporting, if any? Yeah.
Yeah. So in this period, we're going to report our attendance. That's why we had to begin collecting it. Remember, when the governor first had this, no one expected us to do attendance. And so two weeks later, they started talking about now we have to submit attendance. So the teams got together collaboratively to kind of develop what that was. Our DA is held harmless as of the end of February. But again, this connection is not for finances. This is for, we feel, our connection with students to not lose track of kids.
That's what, you know, I'm really getting at is, you know, regardless of what state requirements are, regardless of what federal requirements around funding might be, that we really need to spotlight this for our own purposes. We need to make sure that we're able to. And I know you've done a great job, and these numbers are showing it week by week of reaching out to those students, those families, and then getting to the reason why there might not be as much participation or however we're categorizing, classifying attendance at this level. You know, as you pointed out, sometimes it has to do with access, you know? And if that's a problem, then we have the means, the ability to address that access problem. There's just a whole set of issues that, once we open this up. But I think it's really important that we do open it up so that we're making sure that we're having this. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, hearing from, hearing from the parents or hearing from the teachers. You know, what does attendance look like? What does participation look like? So I'm glad that we're doing this. I'm glad that we're doing it for more than just, you know, what requirements the state or Fed might have for us, but doing it for our own purposes. And it's going to be really important as, you know, we assess things going into the fall.
Yeah. Well, you know, just as a shout out to the coherence of our district leadership, our plan, our superintendent, you know, when we saw the spike as the weeks came up, drop once we got our technology out. So, you know, the hotspots, the Chromebooks, as we distributed, we obviously, for obvious reasons, started our connection. So all those pieces were very important for us to stay connected to our students. You know, we had a lot of logistics to go through and a lot of purchasing to do. And every, every, you know, piece of this really had to be in perfect operation, and we believe it was to really get this kind of data. So it's really a strong, complete team effort on this.
Teachers have been an integral part about letting their principals know why students have not shown up or that a student has not shown up, or that a student may need something. It was through the family engagement facilitators, the teachers and administrators, we realized we needed to get 10 hotspots to Catholic charities so that the children there could get connected. I think the other point you made, Director Sheffield, is that, once again, the order came down, we need to take attendance, but there was no criteria about what, how to do it or what to do. And so I think, again, we have to take the leadership and do what we need to do, not based on, actually, for me, it wasn't based on ADA, it was based on what's going on with our kids, what's happening with them. I cannot wait to get the notes, the notes that the teachers, the admin, the family engagement facilitators, the counselors, the restorative. Every adult who has connection with these kids have put notes into the spreadsheets. Once we get those and can theme them out, we're going to have a wealth of information to help guide us about doing things better. So I'm not satisfied with this about how do we do things better for kids. So.
Thank you.
Diane, who else needed to report?
Can I just ask another question?
Yeah.
So I echo all of Ed's kudos for, you know, really moving quickly to design our own system for us. And then I'm thinking like, as we build out, and Diane, I hear you talking about, you know, some of this, reviewing the notes from teachers. Is there a way to be more qualitative about, you know, the kind of number of touches or the quality of the touches or, you know, what the touches tell us about academic needs, social, you know, social, emotional needs, whatever, how are we? And I'm sure this is a much, this is a conversation that's happening on a daily basis with you folks, I'm sure. But how are we developing, you know, even more in-depth idea of what's happening? You know, I mean, I I have firsthand knowledge with two kids in my home trying to figure this stuff out every day. And it's, you know, it's really hard. It's really, it's really challenging. And so and we're all up in their business and making sure they're on their Zooms and managing two other calendars. But it, you know, I just, I really, there's like, you know, this is an amazing, incredible, first, deep, important step. And then what is the continuum moving forward to really track and understand on a deeper level what's happening?
Yeah. No, I couldn't agree with you more. It's, I haven't had, we haven't had time to theme the data. And that's really what's got to happen. We've got to theme out every single one of these notes to see what the patterns are because it is qualitative data. We don't, the quantitative data are these numbers that Steve has. But the qualitative data is in all the notes that all of the adults took when talking to the students and the families. And so that'll be the next step. I can't, to be honest with you, it's probably a summer project just because we're so busy right now, but it's such important data. The other thing that I just saw that I would like to do, well, two. One is we want to do a survey to parents. And we had one initially shown to us, but we've got to work with SRTA and CSEA on it because it's not about evaluating how teachers did. It's about finding out how we can improve. And it's not about any people. It's just that. So we're going to, we've got to work on that. The second thing is, is the Youth Truth Survey has, I just saw this today and Anna shaking her head, that they have an assessment, a survey that we can do for students specifically around COVID. And so I think we should do it. I think that our mental health needs, I mean, I think I have a picture where they are, but I may be totally off, and they may be much deeper. I know what kids are reporting to me is deep, deep loneliness. They are so lonely and isolated. Not to think about or not to imagine the sixth, eighth, and 12th grade who are mourning the loss of any of these rites of passage to that next level. I mean, that's a whole mourning process. But the loneliness is, it just, it just tears me up. And so we have to think about that as we move to the next phase of what we're going to do with teaching next year. Because if we have to go to an alternate schedule or modified schedule, we have to provide opportunities for kids that are not within the school, but on the outside of it, something different. It cannot be isolated. It's got to be interactive, project-based, and that's going to cost money and facilities. We need a waiver of the Field Act waiver so we can get every facility in Santa Rosa open so that kids can go into them. We need to utilize YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, every organization. Oh, got to partner with us. Anyway, sorry, I went on about that, but
No, I mean, I really appreciate that thinking because I think, you know, the other thing is the extent to which I think this is hardest on elementary schools in a lot of ways is because, you know, there already is a lot of distance learning from the middle schools and at the high schools, right? Kids are used to Chromebooks. They take homework home and they work on them that way. And you know, and I've seen a lot more comfort with the distance learning technologies from that level of teacher as well. And I think, you know, elementary school teachers are so special in the classroom. Like, that is, right? That is like
Magic. Yeah. Yeah.
I can't imagine the kind of transition that's happening and, you know, and the loss that those teachers must be feeling. Because, you know, the kids, I certainly see the loss of the kids not having their teacher in their classroom, teaching them. And a Zoom is, it's exhausting for us to have a meeting. Imagine what it's like to try to teach 22, 30
Yeah. Many of the, many of the plans that we're looking at, you know, we've gotten best practices from Maryland, from Boulder, from California, from different places. And one of the things that our executive team and the subcommittee really need to look at is that our youngest children are in school the most. So, and graduated. So can have the little ones in longer. And the older ones can do the more hybrid. But we're still going to need space, folks. I mean, we're still going to need space. So
Right. And just, just another huge push for, you know, projects and doubling and tripling up and having kids have buddies that they have to be responsible for reaching out to and making sure that the three of them together are talking about a project together. Like, that is where I've seen Like, that is where I've seen, you know, that little bit of classroom magic, you know, try really hard to be recreated on technology. And so, and, you know, and it's the place where I see my kids being happiest, too. And it's such a better way to connect them on screens than the other way that they're doing it, which is Roblox and Fortnite, which allows kids to talk to each other, you know? And it's super easy for them to connect that way, but it's, the educational technology doesn't make it so easy for them to, you know, use Zoom by themselves, you know, figure out how to contact each other, all of those things. So that, I think, and the other thing is, is that now our kids have developed that additional set of skills and resiliency to know how to reach, you know, ex-person who wasn't on the Zoom today, that they want to know how they're doing, and want to reach out to them, and can FaceTime them, and remind them of the next class Zoom, and all this. So just that sense of community, to that we can really rebuild, you know, rebuild that on technological platforms, and just to give kids, you know, responsibility to take care of each other in a different kind of a way right now. Because I think it's, I think it's hard for them to worry about their friends that they are not seeing. And I can imagine how hard it is for the friends that are not being seen.
Right.
Though somehow connecting those two needs. And then that also shares the, you know, the privilege that the kids who are able to be seen, and know how to connect, can share that privilege with the kids who really need them to share that with them. And the kids are really awesome at doing that.
Yeah.
So.
Heterogeneous distance learning.
Kedemura, do you have more?
Team, is there other points that you need to make on the rest of the items?
No, I think mine is, you know, you can.
So I think that the final thing that I'll speak to is the, are the return to school committees. I think it's very important, as we've just been discussing, that our parents, our students, and our staff are involved in these same conversations we're having right now in this meeting, and providing the input and their experiences, so that we can develop a plan to bring to the board for next school year. And knowing, again, it's going to be a working document, because we don't know what's going to happen. And so, as President Lyons said, our first executive committee meeting is tomorrow. We will, I will have met with Dr. Mace by that time. I will be able to bring that information into that meeting. We have subcommittees that we want to talk with the executive committee about. We have inquiry questions from all the best practices we've researched over the last week and a half, two weeks, from cities, and counties, and states who have developed reopening, return to school plans. From that meeting tomorrow, we will assign and get together the subcommittees. The subcommittees will be researching and delving into best practices in that area, ideas, and their thoughts about their experiences, bringing them back to the executive committee, so that we can develop the plan to then bring to the board. So it's somewhat of a short timeline, but it, we will work it through to create the best plan, not a plan in a short amount of time. But I know we also have to begin, like, if we do the plan, then we have to put together all the pieces in order to implement the plan. And so, we're shooting for, I'm shooting for June 27th. I'm going to ask the committee what they think about that. Or rather, it would be a June 20, July 24 finish-up. So more to come on that, because that's not a decision I want to make alone. I want to make that in collaboration with all the stakeholders. So I think that's it. The rest of it that you can read around childcare, around kindergarten registration, and around summer school, it's all a part of the packet. Happy to answer, we are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so let's hold up board members. I want to remind the board members that, you know, they make their presentation, we ask questions, questions, and then we have some public comment coming up, and then we'll have discussion. So Director Medina, hand your hand up for questions.
I'm curious, on the pandemic EBT, which I believe the state started printing and sending cards out to students yesterday, do we have any data on how many of our students will be receiving that? Or is that data that we might get in the future?
I don't know that we would, Steve or Rick, do you? I don't know that we get data on who receives EBT.
Well, not EBT from, like, CalFresh, but these are those that don't get CalFresh. California Department of Education's working with social services to, for those students that have reduced or free lunch that we've identified that applied through us, that are going to be getting this, these cards. So I'm wondering if we don't have that data yet, can we request to know how many of our students are getting that? Because the cards are being issued to the students.
Rick, it's my understanding that every student who is getting free and reduced lunch is automatically in CalFresh.
Yeah, yes, that's true. And to Director Medina's question, I've seen a little bit of information come through on that, that we can certainly make through our CNS department with their interaction with CDE and the other organizations.
Well, we'll ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read the presentation, and it was, those that aren't getting CalFresh, that would then get it, but it's the same thing, it's EBT. The only other thing that I would, that I wanted to add, I don't know if for our counselors or whoever is engaging with our parents, but that, the governor had announced assistance to undocumented families in the state. And today, they announced who locally will be administering that program, which will be California Human Development Corporation. And so, that will begin next week, when they might start taking information. In the chat, I've added the link, so if anybody wants to look at that. But if we identify families that need that assistance, if our staff could be aware of that, to direct them there, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. Director Medina, we can get that information to our counselors, to push it out to our students. So thank you for putting that in the chat.
And let's get it to Delac on Thursday. Okay, thank you, Director Medina. Right now, we are going to switch interpreters, I think. Is that right, Lori?
Hello, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we were at questions from the board on this item?
We're still, we're still have questions from the board. And at this point, I don't see any more questions. I am going to ask our moderator, do we have any public comment?
President Fang, I see one hand raised, and I will also ask if there's anyone else who wants to comment on item E11. Please raise your hand at this time. Right now, Jen Rodriguez has her hand raised, and I am going to open your microphone and move you into the meeting. Please make sure your microphone is unmuted, and please state your name for the record before you make your comment. And please make your comment less than three minutes. Thank you. Please unmute your microphone, Ms. Rodriguez. We will come back. Ms. Rodriguez, are you there? Okay, we're having some technical difficulties. I believe the microphone is not unmuted.
It looks like it is, though, on the participants. Jen, can you hear me?
Okay, I'm going to let you work on that in the background. Jen's there, we can come back to her later. At this point, board members, any other discussion on this report? Excellent report on the work.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody. My only comments are, thank you for that data. One thing that I've been dying for is data, what's happening? There's a lot of anecdotes going on. You know, where are our kids? What are they doing? How many kids are showing up? Who is missing? So this is the kind of specificity and really excellent work that, you know, I expect, have come to expect and can rely on from your team, Diane.
Thank you. We'll get better, we'll get better and better, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I think we're on to the next item.
E11, and we are going on to our last action discussion item, which would be E12, Santa Rosa City Schools Fiscal Update on the Impact of COVID-19.
Deputy Superintendent Edson?
Yeah, thank you.
Did we get Jennifer back?
Oh.
Her hand is not raised, so if she would like to raise her hand at this time, we'll try to move her back into the meeting, she was there.
Mr. Mizera, Assistant Superintendent Mizera, could you text her to see what's going on?
I texted her, I asked her if she's okay, she hasn't responded, so maybe she's out.
Okay.
I'll let you know before she.
Thank you, thank you.
Please invite her to, she can email in her comment, too. Okay, Diane.
Okay, Deputy Superintendent.
All right, thank you. Good evening again, President Fang, Superintendent Kedemura, members of the board. As I mentioned in the previous item, we would have an opportunity to talk about the fiscal situation in the Santa Rosa City Schools that's being impacted by the fiscal situation in the state of California. As mentioned by several of you earlier, including President Lyon, the California State Budget and our budget is moving towards a very unfavorable position. As I know some of you were on the call last week with FICMAT, and the presentation by Mike Fine, what he said in terms of the deficit, and what came out that day from the state was, they're projected at approximately $54 billion deficit due to the impacts of COVID-19, with a potential impact of approximately $18 billion to education statewide. Another thing that's been mentioned over and over again is, the only thing we are for sure of is that we're not for sure of anything at this point. The January budget, which we use as a preliminary tool, as we go into second interim and creation of our budget, we know that the numbers that were presented in there that would impact education are likely to be nowhere close to what was estimated at that point in time. And we've also, as we've discussed at second interim, looking forward to the May revision, which usually is a pretty good indicator of what we can expect going into budget adoption in June. With that coming out scheduled for tomorrow, there's uncertainty what will be said, and if the numbers that are presented tomorrow will hold up into the adoption of the California State Budget, and ultimately, the revenues that school districts will receive. I think it's important to note that in June of this year, when California passes their budget as required by law, they will also be working much like we do at school districts with projections on revenue. The tax deadline extended to July 15th. The revenues that will be received will be projected at that point. There's also other impacts, including lack of sales tax from people buying less, as well as lottery revenues going down, because people aren't playing the lottery as frequently as they were prior to the shelter in place throughout the state. So with that being said, the 45-day budget revision that we normally go through between July 1 and August 15th, not only will be probably one of the most important ones for us as a district, but also for the state of California, as tax revenues are realized and real numbers can be given to school districts. As we go through this tonight, there's a couple of key areas that I want to focus on that were in the report. I did not create a formal presentation for tonight. We will for the third interim report and the budget update at the next board meeting. But there are a couple of areas of the board report that I wanted to focus on, so I will share my screen really quick. The first one that we are continuing to monitor, and Assistant Superintendent Mizera talked about it, was enrollment. As we are aware, we were projecting declining enrollment for the 2020, 2021 school year of approximately 1% across our schools. Guidance from multiple sources that we're using, including FICMAT, School Services of California, CASBO, are saying that we should expect an additional 1.5%, give or take, 1.5% to 2%, based on enrollment that we could lose during the shelter in place with parents and families moving to other areas. As Assistant Superintendent Mizera mentioned, at this point in time, we have already officially lost 44 students. That does not take into account students that may leave between now and August, depending on availability of jobs and other economic factors that could could make these families need to move. So right here is the chart from the cover that shows what our projected enrollment was that we were using at the 2019, 2022 interim report. And then they have been adjusted for a 2% decrease because of the COVID-19 pandemic. I will say that these numbers, as all of our enrollment numbers are projections, so as we get more information through the remainder of this school year, we will continue to update our numbers as warranted. So these are the numbers as of tonight that we're using for budget development, but may not necessarily be the exact numbers that we use when we bring the budget back to the board in June for adoption. The other area that we're closely looking at is COLA. At the January budget proposal by the governor, there was a projection of a 2.29% COLA. All of our sources that I mentioned, FICMAT, School Services, CASBO, and some others are recommending that we start our budget modeling at a 0% COLA. Also, a 2% COLA, and FICMAT last week released guidance that we should also have a scenario with a negative 10% funded COLA. So when we look at this chart, with scenario one, with a 0% funded COLA, you can see in 2021, we would lose approximately $5.2 million in revenue. Carried over to 21, 22, would be a loss of approximately $11.2 million out of our budget. The same holds true for Snow 2 and 3, respectively, with the negative 2% COLA. You can see the nearly $8 million for next year in lost revenue, and approximately $16.5 million in lost revenue for 21, 22. This, no doubt, is daunting numbers, as we already have been working diligently and collaboratively to address our fiscal solvency issues within the district. We brought the Fiscal Stabilization Plan to the board prior to second interim that identified around $11 million in budget reductions going into next year, knowing that we needed an additional $3.6 million to show fiscal solvency in our out-year for our multi-year projections. Reduced COLA to this degree brings that number right back up to what we had already started to reduce. So a lot of work will have to be done when the information becomes more more likely to happen, or more solid information, starting with the May revision tomorrow. The other question that we're receiving a lot, a lot, a lot of times is, what type of aid are we receiving? To date, the state revenue impacts of the Senate Bill 117. we have received those dollars for our school district and our charter schools. The CARES Act funding of approximately $2.2 million, although that amount has been allocated to us, we do not expect to receive those funds until after July 1, when the state of California disperses them. We are continuing to monitor for any other funding opportunities that can help offset the position that we're likely to be in come July 1. As we go through this and as we went, explained in the cover of the board item, we're still taking into account all the requirements that we have to prepare for, including the maintaining of our 3% reserve, looking at other options as just in case at this point. We will continue to develop this information as we receive it, including the May revision, as I mentioned, that comes out tomorrow. We're working on information that we can convene the Budget Advisory Committee in the short term as we go through this process. It's been kind of tough when the numbers have been so unknown in order to even get to this point where we can give estimates of the condition that we may be in going forward. There's other options in the board cover that were just thoughts. As President Lyon mentioned, we understand that there are bargaining locations, but we wanted to make sure that that information was out there as steps that we may have to have discussions about in the future.
Stop you for a second. Can you hear me? We need to stop for a second because we are having an interpreter issue, so we need to switch our interpreter, so we're going to just take a second of time. Lori, you can do that now.
Can you stop sharing your screen, Rick, too, maybe?
I can.
Thank you.
We're just not sure why. Marcella, you're in the English channel, not in the Spanish channel. So I need to figure out, I just need to do a quick switch here.
Who's translating in the Spanish show?
Well, no one. That's why we have to fix it. Mars.
Now she shows Spanish, Lori. I see she's on Spanish now.
Oh. Okay, I don't know if she, she must have switched it.
Let me listen to the Spanish channel.
Yeah, we can hear her.
Okay, it's fixed now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, back to your regular programming, technical difficulties.
Our apologies.
Oh, no, 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 it's okay, Dan. Don't worry.
Yeah. So with that, we are still gathering as much information as we can, joining, constant communication and discussing the impacts of any new information received. Another point that I want to make and make sure that there's understanding about Assistant Superintendent Mizera mentioned it tonight about the whole harmless and the ADA funding. And I want to make the state of difference of we are held harmless in declining enrollment for ADA. And by holding harmless, they give us last year's ADA against current year funding models. It does not hold funding harmless, so funding can be decreased, but our ADA will receive the revenue that is declared for education based on last year's ADA. So we do not, I just want to make sure, because I've heard in some conversations, not necessarily with the board, that we are held harmless and will have the same stack funding next year as we had this year. We'll have the same percentage of funding based on the allocation by the state on a per-people basis. So I think that's an important designation to make sure that is understood. With charter schools, they use current year ADA for current year funding. They do not have declining enrollment protection as our traditional elementary, middle, and high schools do. At this point, I will share that at the next board meeting on the 27th, we will give another budget update and a review of the May revision as presented tomorrow with as much new information as we can. We will also be presenting the third interim report for the 1920 fiscal year as a requirement of certifying and being accepted as a qualified interim report by the county. We'll be presenting that. And then we will move quickly into June with another budget update at the first meeting in June and then our public hearing and budget adoption at the second meeting in June. I have our Executive Director of Fiscal Services on Zoom tonight as well, Joel Dantos, and both of us are ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Joel has his youthful picture in, too. Oh, Joel, it's you.
Oh, thank you.
And that was really funny. Board members, do you have any questions? I think that's Director Sheffield raising his hand.
Just one quick question, Rick, and it maybe it's something that you get back to us on the next report. You know, and I know it's miniscule, your budget dust, but wondering what type of other areas where we might be just trying to think where we might be not spending dollars on our power bill, right? What does that amount to on our, like a busing contract? What does that amount to? Again, I know it's miniscule, but those areas, because we're going to be tightening belts, these are areas that I think we're going to have to look at. At least just while it's general fund dollars.
Yeah, I'll have some better numbers for sure about busing. Busing for for the most part won't change for this year. It'll be the cost savings by not having field trips and other extra curricular activities where the cost savings will be for this year. West County, we do pay on a three-year rolling average. So we'll see some savings as a, as a, as a transportation agency and as a member of that. It won't be as if we stop service completely. We're working right now with our energy billing to make sure that that is in line. We're starting to see some minor reductions, but we know that Pugini bills off of assumption and then does corrections, so are based on previous history of, you know, month over month, year over year. So we're monitoring that as well because we do know that energy usage has gone down significantly.
And I'm sure there are other areas, but thank you.
Yeah, we'll try and address many of those. Another one that I did mention at the beginning was, you know, we're also having loss of revenue in other places, you know, that we for the most part take for granted in some cases, you know, walk up food sources at school sites, you know, beyond our meals that are provided, the ones that come in and buy, buy on daily basis. Those revenues are gone for the last, you know, third of the year and stuff like that, that we're cataloging, if you will. And we, I know we mentioned a couple of them in the board cover, but we're going to try and flush more of those out in preparation for future board budget discussions.
You're muted, Lori.
I have a question for Rick. We needed to make $3 million more in cuts and the Budget Committee was meeting. Is that now kind of like just kind of on hold right now or what's going on with that?
No, as I mentioned, you know, it's been kind of up in the air as we were getting through the first stages of this, trying to just get things operational, getting relative distance learning environment. And then the uncertainty of the budget came in. We have been planning our agenda for our next Budget Advisory Committee meeting. We're going to get information out to the committees to schedule hopefully next week after we have the updated or the best information we have at this point from the state of California with where they think education funding will be and what additional cuts could look like. Based on those budget scenarios of 0, negative 2, and negative 10, 3.6 million looks pretty easy right now in comparison to some of those numbers. So we wanted to have the best information we could with real, with real information from the state, whatever that means at this point. So those meetings will start happening again, so that we can provide input going into budget adoption.
Thank you. At this point, moderator, it's time for public comment.
So please raise your hand only if you want to comment on Agenda Item E12, the Fiscal Update on the Impact of COVID-19. Click Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen. And President Fong, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, moderator. Board members, any other comments for discussion? I see no hands. Oh, yes, I see Director Manieri's hand.
Thank you, President Fong. So, I mean, this, everything that we're talking about is something that definitely keeps me up at night and to a lot of the different points that have been made this evening. I think it was Dr. Kitamura who said it first, but there are so many decisions being made everywhere that aren't in alignment with one another and they're not really taking into consideration the impact on education and students, and that's a huge problem. And a lot of it just feels like it's out of our hands in some ways, which is such a helpless feeling. I hate that feeling of not being able to do something about something so important. And I just wanted to share that in thinking in the long, in thinking long-term, because we really have to be thinking long-term, that there's something that every single one of us can do. I'm wearing my census T-shirt. So how many of you have done your census? Awesome. That's awesome. That makes me so happy. So I just really want to encourage everyone who's listening to this or who's going to be watching this later to do your census because it really impacts our budget and it impacts the way that we receive funding. If, I encourage you to just Google all of that information. There's a lot of information about the impact on federal dollars and how that comes down to us and how that impacts us as a district. And so if you've already done your census to help others, I know I helped my grandma over the phone fill out her census. So just encourage your friends and your family and just be a champion of the census because that is one way that we can all get involved and we can all make a difference and help our community in the long term. Just wanted to put a plug in for the census.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. All right, no other comments. We're going to close.
President Fong?
Yes.
We have Jen Rodriguez's comments via Assistant Superintendent Mizera.
Oh, good. Okay, so she was commenting on what item again?
It was the Distance Learning Plan, and she wanted to word a little bit about talking about the role of nurses.
All right, so you're going to read that for us?
I'm going to summarize a couple of texts, but first of all, you know, she, her apologies. She is distance learning as we speak and her daughter, who attends Creo, is on the computer. So she's trying to figure out mute from her phone, so she apologizes to everybody else and didn't want to interrupt her daughter and take away the laptop. Jen wanted to make sure, and she's a very strong advocate, that, you know, one of the things first and foremost is that nurses are public health nurses. And this is the kind of things they work around and know about these kind of crises, immunizations and the things that affect us. They have a very strong connection. In fact, they have reached out to county health and are participating in helping with the contract tracing. And so I really appreciate the nurses that have reached out and volunteered and done that. You know, of course, they're educators and they're credentialed. They are credentialed and they educate and they have strong presence around mental health as well. She wanted to make sure that they can really help people that are going through some of these crises and really have been trained around that. Lastly, you know, they're very concerned about child welfare checks. They have already reached out to families that have medications and making sure they have access to medications, making sure they're connected to their communities. So there are strong referral to the, the health community as well. And just, it's just, I think, appropriate to say in this, in this time of welcoming nurses, again, and we appreciated nurses before, that they do have a strong component to us. So I think as we move forward, we're going to certainly tap on their resources and their knowledge. They're going to be a strong component of our reopening committees and the safety side of not just bringing our staff back, but our students back, our families. And they're going to have a real strong component for us to really help us monitor, I think, as Dr. Kitamura said. You know, we're educators, not experts. They kind of walk this line of educators and medical experts. And so we're going to really rely on them a lot to help us guide how we move forward and what steps. And so just I appreciate Jen and the other school nurses that come up and help us out. And so thank you very much on behalf of Jen and the nurses.
Steve, how many nurses do we have now, district nurses?
We have seven.
So when I first got here, I was appalled at the fact that we had only four. I thought there were two.
Well, yeah, we were filling some, that's true.
Okay, so Steve has done a tremendous job in making another one of my dreams come true, and that is, you know, enough nurses that we have at least our our feeder patterns covered. But, but in essence, it's such a huge need. We're going to have to look at that, so. But at least we have seven, and I'm happy about that.
Thank you.
So thank you, Steve. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we are moving on to consent items.
Director Medina has a...
Okay, sorry. Director Medina.
I was just going to add an additional comment along the lines of public nurses and the budget. Are there any anticipated future expenses that we might be looking at that that would be new as it relates to like reopening? I know we might not have that information now, but if, if we don't, maybe in the conversations with Dr. Mace, you have any?
Director Medina, we have agonized over this because we need all the PPE. If, if things go as we, all the P, all the PPE, all the sanitizers. You know, how do we, where are we going to house if we split kids and we can only have 10 to 15 in the classroom? We're not going to get space for free, and so that's going to be an additional cost. We're going to, we're probably going to have, we are going to probably have to have more FTE, more teachers, more of everything, because now it's spread out over time. The cost to do this, if we have to do it in a hybrid format, it is, it's, it's going to be astronomical. And so you bet that that's got to be the push. That's why we need medical to say this is how it has to be, so that then we can get the policy and legislation behind the fact that it's got to be funded. So if this is mandated, then you got to fund it. So, oh, yes, we are the list, the list goes on and on.
Some of the things that, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, seeing like what other places have done, like the, you know, taking the temperature of like students coming in, things like that, like would there be additional training costs, staffing needs?
And we can't even get the right kind of thermometers. We've had those on order now for I don't know how long. The tech touchless, so we need those. Rick texted me because there was 2,000 giving, getting out, being given out in Pittsburgh, California. Why can't, we need to get those. We need to get those thermometers. So, yeah, it's the Plexiglas. The Plexiglas should really go in front of every single ESOM's desk, every, you know, anybody who's facing the public should have that same plastic cover that the grocery stores have and that the other people have, so. Oh, my goodness. Yes, so much.
Okay, thank you. We are moving on to F-items, consent items, and we are going to be approving consent items F2 through F9.
Move to approve items F2 through F9.
Second.
That would be Jill McCormick and Allegra De La Cruz. Roll call vote, please, Lori. Hi.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Close?
She's saying.
Okay. Hi. Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong?
Hi, thank you, everybody. And we are moving on to the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of April 22nd.
To approve the minutes as presented of the April 22nd board meeting.
Second.
Thank you. That would be Director Medina and Director McCormick.
Man, keep beating me.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye, thank you. Are there any board member requests for information? Seeing none?
President Fong?
Yes.
I want to thank Lori Kolachek, Melanie Martin, Beth Burke, Dan Bigelow and Mara. Show your faces, show your faces. Come on, come, come in here. I want to thank this group for being so diligent in making this meeting work. I think we have very few little, you know, little things, nothing major. You guys did an awesome job. I'm so appreciative of us being very, very respectful of the community and their wishes. And so you five made that happen. And so board, I just want to congratulate, I would just want to commend them. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you very much.
I have a thing too, Diane.
Yeah.
I want to just really appreciate you, your team, everybody, everybody on the team, everybody in the whole staff, maintenance operations and tech and, you know, nurses and ESOMs and everybody. I'm not mentioning.
Everybody, yes.
Talking about being responsive and SRTA being responsive to, to everything too and CSEA and this is, this is Center as a City Schools and I'm very, very proud of us.
Thank you. Yes, we all should be very proud. We, I want to epitomize working together, SRCS together. Let's, let's really, you know, epitomize that in the future here because we're going to have to. We can't do this alone. We just can't. So thank you.
Did I forget? Did I forget anything? I know.
No, I don't think so. But one thing we didn't tell you was that when she ends the meeting, Lori's cutting it off. So no more Brady Bunch, no more, you know, no more playing. We got to go. So this is for the record. Lori, was closed session recorded?
No.
All right. Bye, everybody.
Bye. Bye, everybody.
Okay, Cabinet, go into the new other Zoom.